Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday meeting, City Council meeting for Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor stand down.
Here.
Councilmember Papado.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Here.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Here. We will now have the silent prayer followed by the flag salute. If you would also join me, please.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, will you read the replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replaced Friday, June 23rd at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, June 24th at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14.
Thank you. Next is item B, Agenda Approval Additions and/or Deletions. Is there anything from the council? Seeing none, we move on to C, Presentations. The first one will be Key to the City, the Wendell Halk family. Wendell Halk passed away on April 17th, 2023, at a young age of 102. He survived by his wife Laura, daughters Jerry, Joane, Joanne, and Jean, his brothers Leroy and John, eight grandchildren and 16 great-grandchildren. Wendell was preceded in death by his wife Florence of 52 years. Wendell served in the Air Force Base for 25 years, retiring in 1965. A year after I got born, he retired as Chief Master Sergeant. Although Wendell served in many capacities in the Air Force, his service as an Air Force Traffic Controller during the Berlin airlifts was one of his notable assignments. Wendell went on to serve in the Galt Police Department for another 40 years, both as a sworn officer and a reserve police officer. Officer Halk was loved by many. He always had smile on his face and was treated, treated all people kindly and fairly. Wendell has well, was well-known in the area as a rancher and a kind and giving individual who spent his life in service to others. He was, there was nothing Wendell enjoyed more than having his children, great-grandchildren and great-grandchildren experience ranch life. And as with someone with 12 grandchildren, I can really appreciate that. They are a true joy in life. So, so many wonderful memories with friends and relatives that will be treasured forever. A man who can do, with a can-do attitude and someone we could all aspire to be like. Would you guys like to add anything?
I just wanted to say, the family of Wendell Halk would like to thank the Galt Police Department and the Galt City Council for this wonderful honor to Wendell Halk. He loved his job and he loved the people in the community and always strived to keep everyone safe. Thank you. We love you all very, very much.
Thank you. That was very well said. So, on behalf of the entire city of Galt, it is with great pleasure that I present to the Wendell Halk family the very first Key to the City of Galt.
Thank you.
Stand and take a couple of photos. Thank you. All right. The next presentation is Sacramento Yellow Mosquito Vector Control District Annual Report by Gary Goodman, General Manager.
Thank you very much for the city for inviting us out to talk a little bit about what we anticipate for this upcoming season as it relates to mosquito control and, and disease transmission. So, I imagine as everybody understands with the recent amount or the rain that we've had earlier in the year and now out of the drought, that has created a significant number of problems that we've identified here within the district. Where am I pointing here?
Turn the button on the left to on, on the side.
Button on the left to on. Thank you. So essentially, our district covers all of Sacramento and Yolo County. Our main office is in Elk Grove, and so we cover 2,000 square miles. And our, our general mission is to try to protect public health from vector-borne disease specifically, but then also abundance of mosquitoes. The amount of mosquitoes that are out there, so when you're enjoying your barbecue over the weekend, you're out in your backyard, you're not being bothered and inundated by mosquito bites. And so, our job is twofold. One, to try to reduce abundance, and then two, to try to reduce disease transmission, which is something that we have specifically here as it relates to West Nile virus in the Sacramento and Yolo County. So, we go through what we call an integrated mosquito management approach, and it's kind of five elements. The first is public information. We do a lot of advertising, public events. We're on the radio, television, all of those types of things, just to try to educate people as to what they can do to reduce mosquito production on their own property. And then two, to pretend, prevent themselves from being bitten. If you never get bitten by a mosquito, you'll never transmit or get a disease from a mosquito. So, we're very active in the general community. We go to a lot of fairs and events. We're open to giving presentations. We've even had tours at our facility so that people can learn a little bit more about what it is that we do and how we do it. And we also have a very active school program where we give presentations to, to various schools around the district, educating them about mosquitoes and diseases that they can transmit. Then we go through what we call our Surveillance Program, and this for us is setting out traps throughout our district. So again, we cover 2,000 square miles of Sacramento and Yolo County, and we're setting traps out essentially on a daily basis and essentially gauging the abundance of mosquitoes. In our particular area, we have about 23 different species of mosquitoes. Not every mosquito can transmit disease, but we have different kinds that breed in different areas. Some breed in rice fields, some breed in wetlands, some breed in backyard swimming pools, some breed in horse troughs, those types of things. And so, we want to make sure that we're understanding the different species and then the risk associated with those species. And so, again, as I mentioned, we have about 23 different species of mosquitoes in Sacramento County. We bring them back to our lab. We separate them by species, and of course, males and females. Only female mosquitoes bite. They're looking for the protein in your blood so that they can produce the eggs. Male mosquitoes don't bite. They just feed on nectar and mate with the females. And of course, when we bring those mosquitoes back, then we'll test them to see if they're carrying any diseases such as West Nile virus, being the most prevalent one in our area. Then we have a biological control program. In the center there is the little small mosquito fish. We're the largest mosquito fish breeding facility in the country. We plant about 3,000 pounds of fish per year just in Sacramento and Yolo County. We plant them in places that they will thrive. So, anywhere where you have stagnant water, a big source for us is the rice fields that we have in Natomas in Yolo County. We'll plant them in wetlands. We plant them at CRP down here, Stone Lakes National Wildlife Refuge, irrigation ditches, and of course, unmaintained backyard swimming pools are a great place for where mosquito fish can thrive. Then we have our Ecological Management Department. That's a department that's specifically designed to identify large breeding sources, and specifically, we work with Nature Conservancy, CRP, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, that have large properties that their goal is to essentially bring wildlife in. Well, whenever you put water on, on land and you have vegetation with that, you're also going to breed mosquitoes. And so, we work collaboratively with them to be able to try to implement what we call best management practices so that they can still provide their mission of wildlife habitat and yet reduce mosquito production on their property so they're not having an impact on the neighborhood and the people there. And then we go into what are called chemical control. And essentially, this is, we have a person, a number of people. We have about 85 employees, and we have somebody that's signed to an individual zone. And every day, they go out in that zone and they're looking for mosquito breeding sources. And so, we have a number of them documented already. And so, they go around on a, on an annual base, or on a daily basis, looking for and treating wherever there might be water and mosquito breeding. And so, obviously, you can treat one source today, and then next week, it can breed again, right? So, we have to go back and continue to visit those things, or that water may dry up. One of the biggest challenges I think we have with some of these is just what's in people's backyards, right? So, in terms of the general sources. So, when you look at different mosquito breeding habitats, some things for us are very easy to spot. It's easy to drive by a wetland. It's easy to drive by a rice field and say, okay, there's standing water here. We know mosquitoes are going to breed there. The bigger challenge for us is what are in people's backyards, because they can't see behind the fence. We can't see all of those potentially cryptic sources. And so, anything that can hold water for about a week has the possibility of breeding mosquitoes. So, mosquitoes can breed even just a tablespoon of water. So, that we've seen mosquito breeding in actually a bottle cap that was full of water. So, what we ask of the public is to take a look around your yard once a week for anything that might be holding water. And specifically, we've seen a lot over this last few months with all of the rain that we've gotten that has filled up a number of things in people's backyards. But then now, as we started to get into warmer weather, people will turn on their sprinklers and they'll fill up those same levels of containers. And so, we want people to be aware of that and make sure that you're doing your own part to make, to not breed mosquitoes on your own property. And obviously, if you're being bothered by mosquitoes, give us a call. Typically, we come out within 24 hours to be able to assess the problem, identify the species, and give you some tips as to what might be causing the source at your own property. Now the battery's dead. Okay. Tunic, oh, there, oop. So, we are anticipating a very busy mosquito season, again, with the amount of rain that we've had. And some of these cryptic sources, these are actual photos from just the last few weeks of where we found a lot of water in people's backyards and that are breeding mosquitoes. And so, we just want people to make sure that they're doing their due diligence. If you need help, just give us a call. One issue I want to talk about specifically is West Nile virus activity, and this is the one disease that we have prevalence in, in our area and we've had for a long time, since 2004. West Nile started, was first found in New York City in 1999, and within four years, it steadily made its way across the country. West Nile is a bird disease. It's carried by birds and vectored by mosquitoes. So, a mosquito bites an infected bird, picks up the virus, and then bites another bird, passes it on, or bites a human and passes it on. We unfortunately, in Sacramento, have the right types of birds to host or be the reservoir for the disease, and then the right types of mosquitoes that can transmit it. And so, here's a chart just in general of West Nile virus cases that were reported in California last year. And one thing I want to try to bring up is, you know, there were two, a little over 200 human cases that were reported in California last year. But typically, the cases that are reported are the very serious, what we call neuroinvasive form of the disease. West Nile virus, if you get bit, is similar to flu-like symptoms, which over the last couple of years, we've been very common with recognizing with COVIDs, right? So, body aches, fever, you don't feel very good. And then sometimes, for the majority of people, they recover within a week or two and go back to their normal lives. The cases that tend to get reported are the ones that become more serious, encephalitis-like symptoms to where people need hospitalization. And West Nile can, virus can lead to paralysis, blindness, and of course, even death. And so, the majority of these cases that are actually reported are the neuroinvasive form of the disease. And so, CDC estimates that for every neuroinvasive form of West Nile, there are anywhere from 30 to 70 additional cases that go unreported. Because people get sick, they stay home, they start to recover, and then they go back to work. They actually never get tested. And so, it's a severely under-reported disease. And we want to make sure that people are aware of that and to try to take the appropriate precautions. There was a study done by California Department of Public Health initially in the, in the early 2000s after West Nile came here, where they did a survey of people that experienced symptoms from West Nile virus, and over 50% of those people were still having a symptom a year later from being bitten. So, again, it can be a very debilitating disease that has long-lasting impacts. We want people to try to protect themselves as best as they can. Here is West Nile virus activity in Galt that we had last year. So, the circles are positive mosquito samples that we've collected. So, you can see, we had three last year in the city of Galt. I think I commend you guys almost every year. Galt does a really good job for some reason. I'm not sure why. But we don't have a lot of virus activity here. We set traps very frequently in, in the city of Galt on a daily basis, collecting that. Obviously, we have a technician that goes down there, and of course, we work with San Joaquin Mosquito Control District, just on the south side of Dry Creek there, to be able to try to understand and what's going on. But typically, in the city of Galt, we don't have a lot of virus activity, which is really good. We do also collect dead birds. Because it is a bird disease, if you see a dead bird, give us a call. We will come pick it up. We'll test it and see if the, if the bird died from West Nile virus. A couple new concerns that we've had, and I think I've mentioned this over the last couple of years, we call invasive mosquitoes. So, again, as I mentioned, we have 23 different species of mosquitoes that are endemic to our area. We're starting to get what we call 80s agypdian, 80s albipictus. This is the yellow fever mosquito and Asian tiger mosquito become established in our area. And the concern with these is that these are very efficient vectors of more exotic diseases like dengue, Zika, chikungunya. And so, these are other mosquito-borne diseases that if we get these mosquitoes established here, we could have the potential for local transmission of those more exotic diseases. And so, the distinction between these particular mosquitoes is they like to be around people, and they like to bite people, and they also are very active during the daytime. So, if you're out in the middle of the day and you're around your yard and you're being bitten by mosquitoes, please give us a call. We will come out, we'll set traps, we'll try to determine whether it's one of our endemic species or one of these new ones. Detections of invasive mosquitoes, again, around Sacramento and Yolo County. Most of these are in, further in Sacramento County. We've had a population in Elk Grove, which is the closest here to Galt, Arden Arcade up in Citrus Heights. So, we've had a number of different places where these mosquitoes have become established. And so, that's the concern that we have again, is that one, they're not supposed to be here, but two, they're getting established, and we have the potential for a local transmission of more exotic diseases, which is something that we want to try to make sure that we're avoiding to protect public health. So, with that, again, as I mentioned, the Dead Bird Hotline, if you see a dead bird, you can call this number, 877-WNV-BIRD, or you can go onto our website and report that bird. We will come pick it up and test it. And then you can get more information on our website. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is repellent. So, this is the best way to try to protect yourself if you're going to be outdoors. This one particularly has DEET, but there are other repellents that are very effective. Oil of lemon eucalyptus, picaridin oil, if you don't like essentially the, the chemical of DEET. They're very good repellents, and we encourage everybody, if you're going to be outdoors, to use repellent. Those just don't last as long. DEET is kind of the gold standard and will last a few hours, where the other ones, you'll have to reapply it depending on how long you're out. But we buy this stuff by the pallet. So, we want it to be used. So, as you come into the summertime and you guys have movies in the park, or concerts, or evening events, or those types of things, call us. We'll be more than happy to deliver that, the repellent, along with information packets to be able to give out to the community so that they can protect themselves. With that, any questions?
Thank you, Gary. That works better. So, you mentioned earlier about the, the new mosquitoes. Are they particular, like this type of mosquito can carry this virus but cannot carry the others? Is that a general truth for mosquitoes?
Yeah, it, it's, it is kind of like that. So, so, as it relates to disease transmission, not every mosquito can transmit disease, right? So, there's something that when they, when they, when they bite a bird and they're picking up the blood from that, they get the virus in the bird's blood, right? It processes through their system, and essentially, it becomes available for, from the mosquito as saliva. So, when a mosquito bites you, it makes a small incision into your skin. It's, it spits in your skin as an anticoagulant so it can then suck the blood. And so, the virus is transmitted in the saliva of the mosquito. So, not every mosquito has that particular link of, from the body into the salivary glands. And so, actually, there's a lot of work that's currently being done from a genetic standpoint of being able to figure out if they could take a mosquito, like that invasive one, that can transmit these diseases, if they can somehow sever that connection between its midgut and its salivary glands, then the mosquito can have as much disease as it wants. But if it's not transmissible to the next bite victim, then it doesn't matter, right? And so, a lot of work now recently is being done on that to be able to try to control dengue and malaria. In Africa, dengue in Southeast Asia, those types of places. So, but yes, not every mosquito can transmit disease, but those can transmit the more exotic ones that we have.
Thank you. Does council have any questions?
I, I did want to, I did want to introduce your representative. Marcia Mooney is currently our board president and a wonderful advocate for vector control and, and great leadership over the last couple of years as she sat on the board as president.
Mr. Lozano.
I was just going to ask Marcia Mooney if she wanted to come up and say anything. We, you come every year, and I don't know that we offered that up. Okay.
Thank you. I really appreciate the offer of mosquito repellent for city events. That should be very helpful.
Yeah. But please let us know. We work with your department on a regular basis, but if you need any more.
Thank you.
Gary, just because you, I don't think you covered it, but a question that I hear pop up about this subject is, my neighbor has a pool. You know, it's, for whatever reason, they're not using it. It's got water standing. They're not really doing a good job, whatever. Can you let the public know they can call in and even if it's their neighbor and the neighbors are, if you, if they're aware of something like that in the neighborhood, then you guys will come out and plant fish, or can you cover that?
Absolutely. So, we, we want to know if you're being bothered by mosquitoes. We don't want, we won't tell, we won't tell anybody who told us. We'll knock on the door innocently. We'll leave door hangers, whatever the case may be. We just want to know where are the mosquitoes coming from. And so, if people have a green pool, we typically come out, if you, if you give us a call, we typically come out either that day or the very next day, because the earlier we can get it, the better off that we can in terms of reducing the mosquito population. We'll come in, we'll treat that pool to kill whatever larvae are there. We'll talk with the homeowner. We can plant fish, which will be a long-term solution to that, to where you don't have to do anything, and the fish will take care and eat whatever mosquito larvae are going to go in there. But really, we just want to know from the general public. So, if you see a source, if you see standing water, if you have any questions about where mosquitoes might be coming from, but very specifically, a backyard swimming pool, that's a perfect example of, of a, of a body of water that's hidden behind a house that can breed thousands of mosquitoes, and those mosquitoes will just stay on the property. They fly. And so, then you're really infecting an entire neighborhood that way. So, absolutely. If you know of somebody that needs some help that has a green pool, give us a call. We'll be more than happy to investigate it.
And then my next question would be regarding pets. Are pets susceptible to West Nile like humans, or is that?
Not, not really. It's a bird disease, and so, they, they've done a number of studies. Dogs and cats don't really exhibit any symptoms. We have chicken flocks that are surround, that are around the neighborhood, or neighborhood, the, the district itself, and chickens can get the virus, but they don't express it, or it's not transmissible. They don't get sick from it. And so, we, we, we take a small sample of blood on a weekly basis from the chickens to figure out, because we know they haven't moved. Whereas mosquitoes or birds, if we find them, they've flown from somewhere we don't know. But the chickens are stagnant, right? So, we know exactly where that transmission may have occurred if the chickens. So, with regular pets, they tend not to exhibit any symptoms from West Nile virus, which is a good thing. It does impact alligators, but I don't think we really have that problem here. It does impact alligators, but I don't think we really have that problem here, so I think we're, we're good. And then the other is horses, actually, is the biggest one that people, that, that's the biggest challenge. Because if a West Nile virus gets in your horse, it's about a 50% survival rate, and it's a very debilitating disease for horses. So I know you guys have a big horse community down here. I recommend anybody who has horses to make sure that they're getting vaccinated for West Nile, because it is a painful thing to watch, a horse, because they get that encephalitis where the brain starts to swell, it's a very painful thing for the horse, so.
Thank you. I have a friend of the family who, in her 40s, got West Nile, and she went from just being fully able to now needing a walker. And it's so, I've seen that, it's crazy what it can do. So thanks for answering my questions.
Absolutely. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next is public comment. Madam Clerk.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the City Council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the City Council, Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda. For this, we have five items.
Thank you, ma, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Ken Lee.
I'm Ken Lee. I wanted to bring up the 12 to 14-foot short corner parking spaces along C Street. They should be labeled for compact cars only. There's always a longest truck and the longest van parking that space on the corner, spaces. It causes blind spots to look around the corner and see pedestrians, and impede the traffic flow because you have to cross over the center line to, to get around them. Fourth Street eliminated a lot of those parking spaces on the corner by painting bob-like islands. They didn't do it on C, they didn't do it on C Street. I also wanted to know, on a lot of senior facilities, the living facilities, some were financed by the city development funds, and some were by HUD. Is there any way that we could have ordinance, rent control for seniors? Because right now, they're taking 60% of our social security income, and they keep on raising it, and we won't have anything to spend once we pay the rent. So I wanted to find out if that's a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Velvet Kane.
I was just checking in on the progress on the Galt Place apartments. It's just getting worse and worse over there. The corporate manager has been calling different associations and trying to make people look like they're mentally incompetent, telling them a bunch of lies about them. They've altered a check of mine that I got from, back from the bank, and they had changed the date on it, and it put my initials on there. And when I got, I worked there, and I got hurt, and I got out of the hospital. I, um, my mail had kept being opened. Every time I'd get mail, it'd been opened. So I went to the post office, got another lock, had them put a new lock on it. Now they're telling me I have to give them the key to my post, my mailbox. And they gave me a three-day notice. And that's about it. And I, I, they kept saying I owed a bunch a month. They gave me a printout, said I owed all the way from when I first moved in. I kept going down to the bank, getting copies of the checks. Every time Buffy would give me a letter saying, if you come down to the bank or call me, I'll tell you what deposit slip this was on it when it got deposited into the bank. They never go down there until finally, two weeks ago, I told her, just give me every check I ever wrote to the building. And they still haven't ever been down there. The ex-manager told me, I still owe it until they find it on their books, which I've already proved to them with the, by bringing the check in, showing that they cashed it, it's in their account. And like I said, now they're giving me a three-day notice. I made a police report, then they said, oh, we found the checks, but you still owe three months. So I don't understand how I still owe three months if they found the checks on their bookwork. And the corporate manager insists on intimidating everybody. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. It will get looked into.
William Fort.
I've been a longtime resident of the Galt Senior Apartments for more than 10 years. I was the second maintenance person that they had hired. I was actually a tenant at that time. I would just like to, I know this has been an ongoing issue with the people and coming in here. I didn't really choose to get involved, but there's been so much talk going on that I felt like I needed to share my experiences. The biggest problem with that place, it was being managed and micromanaged by Linda, sorry, my mind just went blank on her last name. Anyway, I'm sure you've heard of her. She is rude, she is aggressive, and so many people have been intimidated and belittled by her. She used to always call them children acting out. And we have had, I don't know, five or more managers during that time, five or more maintenance people. Many of them, some of them, I shouldn't say many, because I don't know how many, were from her so-called church. She's a minister of some, her own church, and we were always getting, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say always, I know that doesn't count. We kept getting people that were from her church. They weren't specifically qualified for the jobs, and it didn't seem to matter. So many work orders were placed that never got any attention from them. They've done things that, when I first moved in, this, I moved away for about a, almost a year to take care of my grandchildren, and then I had to come back. When I got there, the apartment wasn't ready for me the second time I moved in. They were still painting it, but I was already had been told that I could move in. I had a moving truck there. I couldn't move in for two days. In the meantime, they finally let me put some of my stuff in, in the living room while they were painting around it. And then they never put a deadbolt in. So these are called, I call them shotgun apartments. You walk in your front door, and it's a straight shot through to your back bedroom, or your only bedroom. And so people could look through that hole like that and see straight in. It never had blinds in the bedroom, had three of them missing from the living room. I would have to change my clothes around the corner in the living room to keep people from being able to see me. This went on for almost two months. And during that time, I didn't pay my rent, because I had looked online and found out that if the apartment did not have a deadbolt, it was not considered rentable. And after almost the second month, I got contacted by the office, and they wanted to know what the heck was going on, why wasn't I paying my rent? So I told them. And within the next day or so, it, they fixed it. Came in, put the blinds in, everything. But it took them that long to actually do something about an incident that they knew about. It wasn't like I hadn't told them. And I subsequently paid the rent up to date. In the past, they've been just handing out like candy, three-day notices to quit, to people. So many of these elderly people were scared to death, that they were going to be kicked out on the street. I myself had had all my tools that I had brought in to do my job. I was ultimately fired from that position. I asked why, was never given a reason. I asked if I wasn't doing a good job. Yeah, you're doing a good job. Did I do something immoral or illegal? No. Anyway, when I asked why, and she says, I don't have to tell you. California is a at-will state. So all my tools and things, I had put back into my apartment. I couldn't afford to put them in a storage unit anymore. Well, so my place kind of looked like a storage unit, and I had shelving units everywhere, and...
I apologize for the interruption, sir, but your time is up. If you still would like to finish up briefly, that's okay, but...
Yes, I would like to say emphatically that this Linda Roland is the primary problem that people are having at that apartment complex. She's just a nasty person.
Thank you. I really appreciate you guys bringing this to our attention.
Galt Place resident.
Thank you. I wish I could talk as fast as Gary did, I'd get it all out. The most recent thing is safety, and we are not safe there. If the gates go out and they stay open, well, we have to get somebody. If the doors don't open, we can't get into our houses. They put in a new system and charged us for the system, for the fobs. Well, now, they don't lock the doors. They, they don't lock the gate that goes out into the alley, they don't lock the door that's at the south end of the building. People just come and go. We have people in there at midnight that we have no idea who it is, washing their clothes. If you ask them, they'll tell you, you know, it's none of your business who I am. Well, it is our business. And that is a real safety thing that's, we're, we're so vulnerable that it's really, it's really, it really is hard for us, it's to feel safe when we're unguarded like that. Paul was right. Linda Roland is the bottom line, the apex of the trouble. I've been there as long as Paul's been there, almost, going on 12 years. The work orders are not getting done that she said would get done. And then when you ask about them, they say, oh, there's just too many, we, we can't get them done. Well, my, just for me, because I can't speak for the others, but my wall is loaded with mold, and it has to have professionally done. I will not, I will refuse to have that done by a non-professional because of the toxicity of the mold. And anyway, it's going to have to be all taken apart, and it just sits there. I have put in work orders since, oh, golly, nine years ago, and it still is not tackled, and it just gets worse and worse. She yells at us so much that we feel like we're little babies, you know? And she'll tell us, y'all are a bunch of babies, I've never had a place like this in my life. Okay, fine, but that's not yours to say. And she treats us like we don't know what we're talking about, like we're little kids that don't know how to fix a faucet, or don't know that you don't have to take the toilet out because the flapper is, is not working. Just things like that in general, and then, then she'll triage the, the work orders, of course, so we have to deal with that. The safety issue and being afraid is a big one for all of us. And I thought that, I was told, I don't know where I got this, that the city manager was the one that was supposed to be working in those kind of things and help us, what are we supposed to do? I asked you for that two months ago. Well, we don't know where to go. We don't know how to tackle this huge problem. The, the rents, we've learned, has to go through somebody else. Now to feel so unsafe and to have strangers coming in our building, our home, in the middle of the night, or anytime they want, because they don't lock the gates. So anyway, those are really big issues, I think, for all of us at Galt Place, and I really wish you'd do something. As far as believing the owner, oh, he didn't know. I have produced letters, and I can produce them again, I've got them on my computer, that I wrote to Cyrus 2015, 2017, 2018. The last one, he didn't even acknowledge, so I don't know. Linda Roland seems to be the, the go-between, so I don't even know if he got it. But I do have the ones that went directly to him from as far back as 2015, and now he's saying to the city manager, oh, I didn't know there was any problems. Please, help us, you know, he, I... And another thing I was wondering about real quick is that, is ADA parking assignable? If you have ADA parking on your whatever property, can they assign that to just one car? It's our understanding from DMV, wherever it's ADA, you can park. Well, she said she can do what she wants because it's private property. So I was really wondering about that. And many of the things that are, I'm not talking about, but have been discussed the last time that we were here and with Mr. Farmer. I have proof of them. I would be glad to supply you with a USB drive that will verify all the complaints we've had. But the safety, we can't, I can't verify that. We just live in constant fear that we're going to get kicked out or hurt. Thank you for letting me speak.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Just start, it'll kick on here in a minute.
Hello? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, City Staff. I'm sorry to see so many of my fellow citizens here in, using adaptive devices tonight. Unfortunately, it's not much of a life. I've been doing it since 1984. Although, in a way, I am kind of glad to see them here as backup for what I'm bringing before the council. The restrooms here in City Hall are not only not ADA compliant, they're flat-out dangerous for somebody in a wheelchair or a walker. I've brought this to Mr. Selling's attention, and I know that he is, has looked at it and is concerned as, as well as I am. I do know that the city still has a tranche of ARPA money, and I've done some research since the last council meeting, and it says that consultation fees can be used by the city to, from ARPA money. And since my attendance here at city council meetings, I've learned that nothing gets done in the city until somebody consults on it. I'd like to ask the city council to consider a one-time use of some portion of the ARPA money to pay the consulting fees so that we can get this program rolling. The Americans with Disabilities Act was passed in 1990. That's 33 years ago. And our bathrooms in what is the people's house here in the city of Galt are still nearly unusable for someone like me. The last time I tried to use the bathroom here, I had to text my wife to come and help me get out of the restroom. I'd like to see the city use what is essentially the people's money to upgrade the people's house. And thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, sir. Is there any more public comment, Madam Clerk?
Not on this issue, no.
Thank you. With that, we move to reports by city council members on regional boards and commissions and committees. Vice Mayor Sandu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend a couple of meetings in Sacramento on the June 16 Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. We adopted that Transportation Authority final budget 2023, 2024. It was continued from previous previous meeting. And that's the only agenda it means belonged to means is just only Galt. All other, most likely, it was in Sacramento. I also attended another meeting on June 12. This meeting was South Sacramento Conservation Agency meeting. And we adopted a resolution adopting the 2023 mitigation fee schedule for South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Papino.
I don't have anything to report.
Thank you, Councilman Farmer.
Nothing to report this evening, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, I had a SECOG meeting on the 15th, last Thursday, a board meeting. A couple of things happened. We had a federal certification as a metropolitan planning organization and that was approved by the federal government. Kind of a process that happens every four years. And so it was good that that was done and closed up about a six-month project, so. Also, an update on the mega-region working group. The mega-region is both SECOG, San Joaquin, Council of Governments, and the Metropolitan Transportation Committee Commission. They had a meeting on April 19th at advocacy day where they went to all of the state departments that had almost anything to do with transportation and also our state legislators to talk about the needs of the region and the highway systems that connect us as well as the railway systems. We also had a funding round working group update. And this is a group made up of one representative from each county that discusses how we will move forward on funding, whether it be by population, formulaic, or only competitive, or both. And so it's nice that we're, that conversation's still happening. I don't know if you remember, but the last funding round, which was a few years ago, we had a group of us that made a couple of different arguments, but one was for more of a steady stream, formulaic approach. And so we're continuing that conversation into this round. And then lastly, on Friday, the city manager and I attended a blueprint workshop. And the blueprint, just as a reminder, and for those in the community, this is a plan that is looking at what transportation our region will look like in the year 2050. They're making assumptions on housing growth, jobs growth, economy growth. And all that's being done with data that's obtained by our local jurisdictions and general plans. The meeting on Friday was a tabletop session about what that looks like. And so it was the beginning of SECOG doing outreach on that program. The, this program's going to be started, actually, the plan's supposed to be done in 2025. And so it was very informative. We had stakeholders at my table from transportation entities, both private and public, housing nonprofits, community groups. And so it was interesting to hear the take on what the region should look like. And just a reminder, it's a six-county region. So we're talking about Yolo, Sutter, Yuba County, Sacramento County, of course, El Dorado, and Placid County. So it's quite a large area, but looking at how transportation funding is going to happen in the next 25 years and what the priorities are going to be. And so that is all that I have to report.
Very good. Thank you, sir. I have nothing to report, so we'll next move on to information and consent calendar. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It is recommended that items one through three be acted on simultaneously unless separate discussion and/or action is requested by the city, a city council member. Do any city council members have any, would like to pull any items or separate discussion? Seeing none, I'm asking for a motion to receive the file warrants for period ending June 7, 2023, minutes for the regular meeting of June 6, 2023, intent to renew Galt corporate agreement with the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency for Administration of the City's Community Development Block Grant Activities. Do I have a motion? Moved by Councilman Lozano, seconded by the mayor. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer? Councilmember Lozano? Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. There are no scheduled matters of public hearing, so we will move on to H. Regular calendar items. First on the agenda is Galt Youth Commission Adult Mentor Appointment. Mr. Lozano.
So this is for Councilmember Lozano to appoint an adult mentor to the Galt Youth Commission to fill a vacant position with the term ending 2026. The city clerk's office posted the vacancy on social media and on the city's website. And an application was received from Sharon Feldstad, who meets required qualifications. And I believe she was in the audience this evening. If you have any questions or want to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano.
Yeah, just a little bit of background on Sharon. She's a recently retired special education teacher. Apparently she has a new job now that she's found since, like the last two weeks. She's served in other leadership roles in her work, such as school site council, council teacher representative. And what that is, is each school has a governing board of parents and teachers and administrators that set policy for how money's going to be spent and different items on campus. So that's certainly a nice, nice experience to bring to this. She's also taught leadership classes to high school students for 10 years. And I know she'll be a great asset to the youth of our community and for those who serve on the Youth Commission. Would like to appoint Sharon to the adult mentor position for the Galt Youth Commission.
Thank you, sir. I would quite agree reviewing the application. I think the commission is quite lucky to have a person of your skill set joining them. So if there's no other statements, I would look for a motion to accept the.
It's his appointment.
It's just automatic. Nice to have that kind of power.
Sharon, would you like to say anything publicly or are you good? Okay. And I'd like to thank the rest of the commissioners who helped in recruiting you, Jessica and everyone. Thanks.
H2, subject 2023 Cannabis Public Engagement Plan and Cannabis Survey Results. Before we start, I would just like to make one quick statement to my fellow council members. I know this can be a lively discussion. And if we are to give any direction, I just want to give a final reminder that if at least three of us don't agree, nothing's going to happen. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Galt City Council. I'm Lorenzo Hines, City Manager. The first thing I'd like to say is to sort of the public watching and to the public in the gallery here. This survey, these survey results that we're about to see here represent a, our first data point in the council's deliberative process as it relates to cannabis issues here in the city of Galt. For those who think that a decision is going to be made tonight, there will be no decision. It hasn't been, it hasn't been agendized as that kind of a discussion. We will have the results of the survey. You will see my outreach plan, an updated outreach plan. So there's still more work to do. We will be talking about this issue if council deems it so through the end of this year. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands we're not here to make any decisions. And so I'm going to get a little background here. On May 3rd, well, currently, the city prohibits all commercial cannabis business activities. On May 3rd of 2022, city council directed me to schedule a discussion regarding cannabis retailers during the fall of '22. On December, in December of '22, we've got a presentation from HDL Consultants regarding the regulated cannabis industry and the implications to the city. And HDL is the consultant that we use to forecast our sales tax and property taxes. So they're, they're pretty authoritative when it comes to telling us what the fiscal impact of cannabis retail will be. That presentation was also intended to inform council's consideration of possible direction regarding cannabis ordinance. Also, on December 6, council directed directed me to bring back an item that laid out an outreach and education plan that will allow for public participation in this conversation. On January 17, the council approved the first iteration of our cannabis public engagement plan. And so I had intended to be back here earlier, but we had a number of other priority items that have dominated our agenda through the winter and spring. And so I am back here with a revised cannabis public engagement plan, which is on page two of three of the staff report. The first bullet that we have checked off is an update of the FM3 Community Survey Result, which we're going to see here tonight. The next check is that we presented the updated survey results to the council. And as soon as we're done with this presentation tonight, this survey will be uploaded to various parts of the city's website. The, the next item is we're going to conduct informational sessions for the public. And again, this is a public conversation. So on June 27th and June 29th, at the Galt PD Community Room, we will be having a town hall. And that town hall will have two topics. The first topic is your Measure Q dollars at work because there's been a lot of conversation about where those dollars are going and what they're being used for. And the second part of that public forum will be a discussion of cannabis issues here in the city and where I will present the results. This, basically, this same slide presentation for those folks who couldn't make it here tonight. We will put a public frequently asked questions on our website because all of this outreach that we're getting, we're recording all these questions and we're going to make them available. The other thing is we're going to contact our community groups such as Rotary and the Lions and just to make sure that we've included them as well. We're gonna, I'm going to form a ad hoc committee, which is going to consist of various stakeholders here in the community. It will be a small group, I would say no more than 10 individuals. And I will also approach our approach our council committees and commissions and get their input as well. And so we'll be back here during September and October to further these discussions. And if I can get things done earlier, then it might be the end of August. But this survey that we're about to see represents the first data point that council will consider as we've going through the deliberative process. I'm going to turn it over to Lucia.
Lucia, can you hear us?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And just to clear up the logistics, I just want to make sure everyone can see the slide deck.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you all so much for having me. So my name is Lucia Del Popo and I'm a senior vice president with FM3 Research. So I'm here to present the results of this survey that we conducted in late February, early March. The survey itself was meant to determine basically the community's attitudes and perceptions of cannabis issues. It was designed to be really fair and balanced, really just to assess where the community's thinking was on this issue. So just a quick, on slide two, I have some of the survey methodology descriptions. So just to kind of give you a quick background on how it was done. This was a dual-mode survey, which means folks were able to take the survey online or via phone and they were contacted via phone call, email, and text invitation to participate in the survey. Registered voters were surveyed, so 361 voters were reached. Among those, 347 are likely to vote in November 2024. That's just kind of an interesting breakout that we included a few places in the decks. I wanted to flag that. And the margin of error on this data is about 5%. And finally, we have done work for the city before, so we have some data to compare over time. So there are a few places in the presentation where we have some comparisons to prior years. So moving ahead to slide four. One of the first questions we asked voters in the survey was whether they were aware that cannabis is legal to sell in, or whether they thought it was legal or not to sell it in Galt. And we saw that 20% said it was legal, 29% said it was illegal, and 51% were uncertain. So less than one-third were aware that it's illegal to sell cannabis products in Galt currently.
Lucia.
So overall.
Lucia, we have moved on to slide five, apparently.
Okay, no problem. So starting on slide five. One of the questions we asked voters in the survey was whether they supported lifting this ban on cannabis sales. And we saw that we asked this question in 2021 and in 2023, so you can see the comparison over the time. The wording was slightly different each of the two years, but we saw that 58% offered support in 2023 for allowing the sale of cannabis recreational marijuana within Galt city limits. I apologize. So the wording was slightly different from 2021 to 2023. But what we did in 2023 was after asking folks about whether they knew if it was legal or not to sell cannabis in Galt, we actually gave them the information and said, look, it's currently illegal. In that case, do you support it or oppose it? And we saw 58% support. And on slide six, you can see that overall, all the profile of voters, the whole sample was 58%. The narrower part of the sample, that's still made up a large part of the sample, which was the likely voters, those likely to cast a ballot in November 2024, very similar levels of support, both majority support, 58%. Moving on to slide seven. So this section here, we explored some of the regulations and details of what this policy could look like in Galt. So on slide eight, you'll see that we asked folks whether they supported allowing, or regardless if they supported or not allowing cannabis retail, how many retail locations they would be comfortable with or they would think is appropriate. And we saw that by far, voters preferred having between one and two cannabis businesses within city limits. 51% said they were comfortable with one and two. 20% were fine with three and four, and only 6% said between five and six. So generally, one to two businesses is what the community said they were comfortable with. We also asked about a series of potential rules and regulations on slide nine, starting on slide nine. And this spans two slides. And we asked about individual aspects of this policy and whether folks supported or opposed it. So on the right there, you'll see the total supported, total opposed for each. And then on the left there, you'll see the description. And what we saw that overall, 81% offered support for requiring independent testing, requiring dispensaries to have onsite security guards. So those were the two that had the overall highest support. The dark blue bar there, you'll see 64% and 65% strong support, so quite strong support for that. Other elements that got. Other elements that got really strong support are on this slide, which were requiring medical and adult-use cannabis dispensaries to be located at least 600 feet away from schools and other places where children are. And then, uh, the other one was requiring them to meet high labor standards. All of these received really broad support, four and five, um, level of overall support, and about three and five to two-thirds strong support from the community. Few people opposed these aspects of the policy. On slide 10, you'll see this list continued, and what we saw was overall, pretty broad support, you know, 74% for allowing cannabis retail stores to sell products to adults ages 21 and over, allowing medical sales, uh, limiting their hours from 10 a.m. to 10 p.m., also broad support for that. We saw majority support for allowing delivery, uh, to those who are 21 and older, and allowing retail cannabis sales. So this is kind of a, interesting, I want to pause here, that 63% who support allowing retail cannabis sales, very comparable to our initial ask, um, earlier in the survey where we saw 58%. So overall, uh, we do see that a majority are comfortable with the retail cannabis sales in the, um, city limits. And finally, we asked a question about prohibiting cannabis cafes and onsite consumption, and a majority supported that. So majority wanted to prohibit, um, cannabis cafes. On slide 11, you'll see some of the progression as people got more information in the survey. So, um, in the survey, we provided folks with a series of, uh, statements, kind of educational statements of why this could be a good idea, and then a series of statements about why this is not, maybe not a good idea for the community. Half of respondents heard positive statements, followed by the more critical ones. The other half heard the critical statements, um, before the supportive statements, because we really want, and they heard the same number of statements. And the reason we did this is we really wanted to kind of test, um, how a community conversation flows when, you know, you and your neighbor maybe agree or disagree about something, um, and really be fair and even in this. And we saw that regardless of the order in which people heard the information, in the end, they ended up around 64%, 63% support. So a majority continued to support this, um, as, as they got information about the And then on slide, um, 12, so this section, we explored the idea of a tax measure. Um, and on slide 13, we, um, asked folks if they felt like there was a need for funding in the community. And we saw that 72% saw a need for additional funding for city services in Galt, with 28% saying there's a great need. Um, so overall, pretty comparable to prior years when we've asked this question in the city, where 68% saw at least some need. Um, so that's remained really consistent and is within the margin of error of the times we've asked this question previously. On slide 14, you'll see that we asked about the concept or idea of a gross receipts tax, up to 10% on businesses that dispense cannabis for adult recreational use. 69% supported this idea when we asked it kind of like this in plain language, um, uh, in a way, in, we would normally talk about this issue, and, and 45% offered strong, 55% offered strong support. Um, only 27% opposed this tax on cannabis businesses initially. On slide 15, you'll see that we tested some ballot language. So, uh, we wanted to test it on a finer point. Um, so this was language that, um, we developed and, and had, um, approved by the city attorneys to make sure it was as realistic as possible, so it would, um, be something that someone would actually see on the ballot. And we saw on slide 16, that overall, 60% offered support when they heard that of ballot language for the proposed 10% tax measure on cannabis businesses, and 56% said they would definitely or probably vote yes. Among the more, the likely voters, so the chart on the right, uh, we see that the number is very similar. Um, so 60% overall support and 55% saying they would definitely or probably vote yes. So those people who are a little bit more, um, certain of their opinion. So, um, on slide 18, here I just have a few conclusions wrapping things up, but overall, the takeaway here was that, um, overall, people are not, um, completely aware of the legality of cannabis right now or illegality. Um, so there's, that's not a high awareness in the community, but when we inform people that it's currently illegal, um, they, a majority is supportive of allowing, uh, the sales within city limits, um, and they're comfortable with about one to two businesses. And we also saw that a majority was comfortable with the idea, um, of a gross receipts tax on these businesses. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lucia. We, we appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, members, did we have any questions about the survey?
I do not.
I, I have questions.
Mr. Farmer.
And I, is it Lucia? What's the name?
Lucia.
Lucia. Um, thank you for running through this. Um, I, I don't remember what slide it was on, but, um, could you touch real quickly on the definition of, uh, the cafe? What that means? You, you talked briefly about there was opposition against such a thing. Can you explain what that is exactly?
Yeah, I can read you the language that we, that respondents read, heard. So they heard prohibiting cannabis cafes and the onsite consumption of cannabis products at medical and adult-use cannabis dispensaries. And 53% supported that. Um, so they supported prohibiting onsite consumption.
Right, but my question is, can you explain for, for, for those of us here in the, and those watching at home, can you explain what exactly cannabis cafe, what exactly are they opposed to? What does that mean?
Um, I mean, so they, they are opposed to that description they heard, so whatever, but whatever their interpretation of that is, I don't want to kind of assume that everyone interpreted it the same way, but, um, a cannabis cafe are essentially is a place where in some locations, you can buy cannabis and then consume it onsite, the way you would a cup of coffee, the way you might with, uh, food, right? Um, instead of taking it home. And, um, what we're hearing is that the community doesn't want that. They are, um, generally supportive of not allowing that or opposed to allowing the onsite consumption.
Okay, thank you for that, the clarification on the definition. My second question is, um, you were talking about, uh, you mentioned proposed ballot language. Should something like this, uh, ever be presented on a ballot? But really, what it is, there's, it would really be two pieces, right? One is, one, and I, these are all obviously just theoretically hypothetical, but what, one is really, uh, not to put the cart before the horse, but one would be a potential ballot measure to actually allow the retail cannabis. And then the second piece, which could be along with that or whatever, would be to then, uh, would be the tax on such, correct?
So the city team will, yeah, Laurenza, did you want to jump in there?
I'll, I'll jump in. Um, there's two pieces. We have the regulatory piece, which is to allow or not to allow it. That's an exercise of our police power and land use authority as a city. So that can be done through ordinance like you would other ordinances. That's the regulatory piece. The tax would require to go to the voters because state law requires the tax to go to the voters. So it'd be two steps. The reg, and the regulatory scheme, just to kind of give a sense of how it would, would could shake out, is it, you could say, listen, until there's a funding mechanism or a taxing, a tax measure, this, this ordinance won't go into effect. So you could basically put some stipulations of the ordinance. So it's on the books, and then you go out to a tax, and if the tax passes, then, uh, the ordinance could go into effect, the regulatory piece.
And that tax would have to be at two-thirds?
It could be at, uh, it could be a general tax. And I think the ballot language that we have there is based upon a general measure, so it'd be for general governmental services. And again, this would just be a tax to the businesses on their gross receipts. It wouldn't be a tax, um, to the general electorate or users. It would just be on the businesses.
Good point.
So, Mr. Slendario, just, I mean, and, and yourself or Mr. Heinz, whichever can maybe elaborate on this question, but I'm just thinking far ahead, is it, is it plausible that, is it plausible that although we have the power to make policy on the current municipal code that prohibits it by overturning that, uh, we have that power? But the tax would require, was required to have, be on a ballot, is it plausible that this body could, um, as one of the options, elect to instead put the choice of overturning the municipal code to the people by form of ballot?
Um.
I'm just wondering if that's.
Yeah.
Or is it for this body to decide only?
There is, there is a way to do that. I forget the term right now, but it's a citizen's.
Yeah, typically, it's an initiative measure that's brought by the voters, um, so they could put something on the ballot. Uh, I, I, I'm not going to sit here and, um, say with certainty, but I, I'd have to check, but I don't think I've seen that before where the council has elected to put it before the voters on a regulatory ordinance. Usually that is an initiative measure. But I can, I can double-check that and get back to you.
The one is not tied to the other.
Correct.
So to speak. Well, I mean, obviously, if the municipal has not changed, the taxes are relevant, because it doesn't apply.
Right.
So, but didn't revert, okay. All right, um, that's, that's all I had right now. I think, uh, yeah, that's all I had for the presenter. I just wanted clarification on those two items. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. DeZano.
Yeah, I just had a follow-up question for city attorney about this particular issue. We had talked at some point in the past, uh, several months, about, um, whether or not the ballot measure could go first in terms of the tax, and then based on that. Now, I, I heard Councilman Farmer mention it, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear. It is a, an appropriate way to proceed in some jurisdictions where the ballot measure of the tax gets puts on, put on first, and then based on that, then the municipal codes changed.
Yeah, so you could structure it so you could do the tax first? Is that essentially your question?
Yeah, that's, can we do that?
Yeah, you could probably, you could probably do that. In theory, yes, you can absolutely do that. The only practical complication is sometimes the voters may not know exactly, if they don't have a peek behind the veil on how the regulatory structure may work, they, it may, it may make it more difficult for them to vote yes or no. Um, so the advantage of if you have the regulatory ordinance already in place, then they know if the tax goes on, what it's going on for and what the program looks like. But I think you could, um, you could absolutely pass a tax, and the tax could basically say, if there is an, if the city does put an ordinance to allow commercial cannabis in the city, you know, would you approve of a 10% or whatever the amount is? You could absolutely do that.
Okay, thank you.
So just from my understanding, I, I would just want to piggyback on what Councilman DeZano was saying. Rich, just, you're, you're kind of thinking that if the tax measure went first, it's almost a way of getting a pulse on the community's feeling by the outcome of that versus the, is that what you're kind of thinking?
Um, what I'm thinking is just, I just remember having that conversation before, and since you brought up the inverse, I just thought I'd confirm the other. I, that's it. That's all it was.
Thank you. Is there any other questions by council or the presenter?
That kind of dovetails to what I was looking at on, uh, slide 16. And that's for people who favor the tax. And if, and if we were to try and ask that question on a ballot first, could we be looking at a situation here where some people want cannabis retail, but they don't want to pay a tax? And other people don't want cannabis retail, so they want it taxed? Is that, is that a possibility that that's statistically what we, we might be seeing here?
I, I agree that that is a possibility. It, it, just my advice, having done this in another city, um, the framework, the regulatory framework was already in place, including the selection methodology, um, prior to the issue going to the voters. So the voters had context for understanding, um, what this tax increase would do and where it would fit in the sort of grand scheme of things.
Yeah, and I think that's fair to the voters, otherwise you're asking them to vote blind. They're voting for something, but they don't really know what it's going to do or what it's for. Is there any other questions for the presenter?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just a clarification, uh, do you know this slide, the survey 2021 and 2023?
Which slide number, sir?
Uh, slide number five.
Okay. We'll get back there. Yes, sir.
So there's, on 2021, that's the same, uh, company who are using FM3 or that time, if you have a knowledge, with a different company?
It was FM3 who did the 2021, is that right, Lucia?
Yeah, that's, that's our data from a prior survey. And you can see at the bottom of the slide, there's the question language, so it was slightly different, but it was asking about the same idea, whether they support, generally support or oppose allowing cannabis businesses within Galt city limits.
Oh, so that means you were telling us you guys using the same, almost same process to see what kind of support, or there might be a different question than 2021 and 2023, Lucia?
The question itself and its substance was the same. Um, they may have tweaked a word here and there, but it's the same question. What's changed between 21 and 23 is our population has changed. And so as a result, you got a slight change in the, the numbers. While we're on this particular slide, um, even though it looks like total support is 58%, and Lucia, you know, forgive me for, um, going statistician on you here, um, in 2023, the strongly support is 36%. The strongly opposed is 29%. And those are kind of the two numbers I look at, because the somewhat support and the somewhat opposed, that can flip. Okay, but that 29 and 36, that tells me those folks are pretty planted in, in their opinion. So those are the two blocks that I look at, and I'm just offering that as, you know, my, my approach.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pompano.
Just curious if there was any, uh, public comment on this that we could hear before we.
Adam Clark. Is there any public comment?
Yes, we have three comments. Peter Belleville.
Yes.
And wherever you see orange, that's my vote. My name is Peter Belleville. I've lived here in Galt since 1981. My children have grown up here and graduated from Galt High School. The city of Galt has been the city of parks and flowers, the city of birds and strawberries. Now the city of Galt contemplates becoming the city of skunk weed. Which of these titles and descriptions doesn't fit? The city administrators ponder's over pandering to potheads. What problem or fault will this remedy? Does cannabis store solve, solve something? Does it add virtue? Is it praiseworthy or of good report to have cannabis industry in city of Galt? Does this solve a problem or does it create problems? We really don't need polls to answer the question before the council. This city, do we endorse the promotion and sale of poisonous chemicals detrimental to the mental health of our people? Is the sole motivation for this that a cannabis store would bring revenue to the city? That's a poor exchange for a detrimental chemical to be licensed in our community. Ultimately, drugs of this nature will poison the well, and ultimately, the unforeseen costs will be dramatic and incalculable. Everyone will pay. Galt may as well start issuing permits to build more nursing homes and assisted living facilities. What are we doing here? Inviting a store in our town that needs security guards and is quarantined against our youth that represents a new kind of pandemic to another kind of disease? We don't need armed guards around milk and eggs at the grocery store. We're not considering a store for selling bread. Cannabis, it's a nice sterile scientific name and is still illegal under federal law, but that doesn't matter. We can always ignore, negate laws we don't like. It's legal in California and other states, legal, but not safe. It's not innocent. Of course, we can always trivialize law and encourage lawlessness just by blowing smoke. Alexander Pope said, voice, vice, rather, vice is a monster of so frightful mean as to be. as to be hated needs but to be seen. Yet seen too oft, familiar with her face, we first endure, then pity, then embrace. End quote. We embrace, we embrace it by legalizing it, endorsing it, promoting it, normalizing it. And as a community, we become the drug pushers. Is this an image we want for GALT? GALT, the city of parks, flowers, birds, strawberries, and skunk weed? It stinks. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Scott Robinson.
Good evening, city. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, city council. My name's Scott Robinson. I'm the owner of GALT Cannabis Company. We're not operating at this time, obviously. I just wanted to say thank you to the city council and city manager and staff for the work you've done on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. World record shortest comment. Is there any other public comment on this item?
Dr. Melissa Newberger.
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be up here to speak to all of you tonight. My name is Dr. Melissa Newberger. I work at the Sacramento County Office of Education. We run prevention intervention programs for youth all throughout Sacramento County. That's more than 247,000 students. We also run the court school, the El Centro School. Where students who are incarcerated, who are detained for selling or using drugs on school campuses are brought to. It's one of our detention facilities. And I do research for underage youth and the Sacramento County Coalition for Youth. So I just want to stand here as a researcher to really give you some critical thoughts about the study that's presented here tonight, right? We have some opinions from our public, some that say, hey, we're, we're a GALT cannabis business because it's really trying to make it sound very mainstream and normal. We have others that are saying this is something that we really want. But what I really want to show you tonight is really about the data. And maybe there's some elements in this study that are missing to me. But as a researcher, there are some serious flaws in here. And as a, as a council, I really encourage you to be very smart in your decision in moving forward and in anything you start to consider. Once you make this decision, you really can't walk back on it. And as one gentleman eloquently said, if we have to bring in a business where people think it's a great idea for them to have security around it, you really have to question that business. So to get to the research study, this study that represents 26,000 people in GALT was based on 361 people. Okay, that's, that's 1% of the people in GALT. So you could take 100 people in the room and you sample one person, you say, oh, this is what GALT's saying from that one person, and that's not fair. We don't know anything about the demographics of the survey. What were the ages of people that were sampled? They say that the surveys were offered in English and Spanish. What percent were given in Spanish? Because one third of our constituents in GALT speak a language other than English. Were there other survey options for them? We know that about half of our constituents of GALT are Hispanic. What percent of the Hispanic community was surveyed? For those that were surveyed, did they tend to be in the upper socioeconomic status? Or did we actually ask people that represent some of our marginalized groups? And as we're considering, if we were to have a dispensary here, where are we going to put it? Are we going to put it somewhere that further hurts our marginalized groups and brings to them an industry that needs to have armed guards outside that's protecting the industry, but nobody else in the area? Or are we going to say, well, if our socioeconomically advantaged people, the people in the very, very wealthier parts of GALT are the ones that want it, then let's be sure to place it in an area that meets their needs the best? What I'm saying here is that a lot of the data that you see here isn't really representative of what GALT may think and feel. If you look at the total and you say, well, let's say 50, 50 people percent, you know, 50% support it, that's 165 people. That's not a whole lot of people. So really be critical about the study, the information you get, the length of the duration, how they were approached, when they got called or contacted, what was that initial comment that was given out? I have lots of people that didn't hear anything about the survey being optioned. They had it only open for one week. I mean, we put employee opportunities out there. We post jobs for longer than one week. Why are we doing so little to really get a true sense of what GALT people want? Thank you.
Thank you. Was that the last public comment?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from the council for the presenter?
Yeah, I have a question. It kind of ties into what, what Melissa kind of touched on. With regards to the amount of people that were polled, you know, I remember looking at a poll for something else we were presented with a couple of years ago, and I remember thinking like, you know, it's such a small piece, like, how can you really? When it comes to polling, could you, I mean, can you give us an idea of when you do polls like this? What, like I, someone told me about a poll they did like California wide, and it was like a certain, like, can, 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 can the presenter please elaborate on, being that you guys, this is what you do? Can you please elaborate on like typical pieces, like how, what, what kind of numbers you get from polls, like whether it's statewide, countywide, citywide? Just to give us some perspective.
Lucia, can you give us the survey methodology? We'll see if we can get back to slide two. I think that may answer the councilman's question.
Yeah, so the survey methodology was a random sample survey, which means that we pull a random sample of voters. We got, we were targeting between 300 and 400, and we got 361. What's different about a random sample survey than one where I just put it up online and whoever takes it is that it is inherently representative and it adds that we can have that margin of error that's at 5% margin of error. And we monitor who's responding so that the quotas, and we set quotas so that it is representative of the community. So even though it is not, it is not a larger sample, I heard the public comment. What ends up happening is that because they're random samples with multiple opportunities and different ways of participating and demographics that represent the community, we can assign a margin of error and have confidence in it. This is a very kind of industry-wide standard approach. It's used throughout election polling in California and beyond also. And I will add, in terms of the sample size, this is a great sample size for a community this size. Typically, we do many polls around 400 in larger cities. But GALT's a pretty small community, so we were happy to kind of end up with almost 400 respondents. Our statewide polls, frankly, sometimes we'll do usually between 600 and 800. So the larger samples get helpful when you really want to slice and dice the data in different ways. But again, we are getting kind of an initial read on this and the, like I mentioned earlier, the demographics are representative of the, of the electorate.
Okay.
And.
Thank you.
And to support that for the folks listening, we had the same firm do survey for Measure Q, our recently passed sales tax increase for parks. And those results were pretty spot on as far as the final results when we looked at who voted and how many folks voted for it. The other thing I'd like to mention is while we have 26,000 folks here in the city of GALT, not all those folks are registered voters. And so this survey was focused at registered voters and voters likely to cast a vote in 2024.
Is that all questions for the presenter? We could let her go and have a discussion outside of that?
Lucia, thank you so much. By the way, halfway through there, if I sounded more authoritative and intelligent and better looking, that was our city attorney, Frank Splendario, who piped in when you thought it was me. So take care, Lucia, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So in general, I know we're just having a discussion, you know, I think Councilman Lozano brought it up once before during a private discussion that, is there any, I would be curious, or, you know, I, maybe we just need consensus. I know our statement was a little conflicting about, you know, we're not officially voting for something to be on the ballot or voting to change ordinances, but if we do want something added to as this moves forward, there needs to be some sort of a consensus. And that was my point before we started this. So having said that, Councilman Lozano mentioned that I have yet to see a long-term study results that has been done on any cannabis for local communities. If there's something out there that the staff can, you know, help us make a good decision, I would love to hear that. I think everybody makes great points. The city is also very, or the council is also very flexible in what we can do. I mean, we could, we don't have to put it on the ballot as far as, you know, two thirds measure for specific. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Splendario, we could regulate the strength, the age of users, the placement of use, of where it is, what type of, what type of business it is, the type of security, the nighttime security. I know I visited the Davis Cannabis Club and everything gets locked up in very big safes at the end of the night, and there's plenty of cameras. Just in a general sense, you know, again, people make good points, but you'd be surprised how many nurses, religious people use it for medical reasons, you know. For me personally, I think the most accurate comparison and argument for or against is alcohol. You could go one-on-one with alcohol across the board. Alcohol is a poison to the human body, and that's why you wake up with a headache. But it's completely acceptable by society. So, and I'll just leave it at that. But I just want to bring those things to, you know, the public square, I guess. And if my fellow council members have like anything to add, they're welcome to go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to just make a few, just share a few thoughts. So first, I appreciate the people that spoke tonight. Melissa and Mr. Belleville, is that correct? We all knew, you know, this is, and this, this is now and will be, you know, should this discussion before will be, you know, somewhat controversial. It's a very polarizing topic, I think, in the, in a community. I wanted to touch on what Melissa said about, you know, not, you know, the, I, I just want to make it clear that we're not, we're not basing decisions on this poll here. I think we made it very clear to Mr. Hines, and I think he very clearly understands that we want to leave no stone unturned in this, on this topic, which is why we've scheduled some town hall meetings. And, and, you know, that could just be the start of many things that we're trying to do to allow anybody and everybody, no matter what side of this topic you're on, to, to weigh in. We, we want to hear from everybody. We don't want anybody to come up to, I, I personally don't want anybody to come up to me and say, you know, I never got a chance to, to weigh in on that before you guys did anything. And so I think that's important. What I want to say just for myself is, you know, it would be very easy just to just not talk about this. But, you know, and I think that's what a lot of councils have done before us. I just want to applaud my fellow council members, honestly, just for having the bravery to say, you know what? We represent the people. We should talk about something. If I, if I fairly represent the people of this town, then I fairly represent people who don't want something as well as people that want something. And I think it's my duty to hear all those voices and consider all those voices, not because I feel a certain way or because I want something or don't want something. I try to think, what do the people of this town want? Obviously, this is very tricky because you could have half want and half don't want. But I think that, you know, it's, it's, it's something that I think needs to be revisited because I don't think I would be doing my duty if not to just visit it, have an open discussion, let the community have an open discussion. And then, you know, decide if there's something we do or don't want to do. So again, I look forward to hearing from people. I have been hearing from people for a long time. I'm sure I'll hear from both on both sides of the fence moving forward. So the only thing I would, to your comment, Mr. Vanderburg, Mayor Vanderburg, is I, what I would like to see moving forward is some data that I think was missing tonight is, well, first of all, we were, see, we saw this survey, Mr. Hines, we were given a sneak peek of this. But there was some demographics in the survey that was shared with us with age groups and all that, but that wasn't presented tonight, right?
That was not presented tonight because we had to keep it short.
Okay.
And I didn't want to create a divisive environment.
Yeah, well, I'm just, yeah, that's what I'm saying. One of the comments tonight was that there's no demographics with who it was, so I think that that would be good. But I think moving forward, something that's not in this poll that would be helpful would be like, I would like to see data on cities that, you know, usage of cannabis in a city that didn't have legalized, and then the usage, how it changed after it was legalized. I would like to see correlation between, you know, the usage by, by citizens before and after things were legalized or not legalized. That would be interesting to, to show. So that's just one thing that pops up in my head. But anyways, that's my thoughts for the moment on this, and I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Mr. Lozano.
Yeah, just real quick. I know we had some public comment, but I did see someone who wrote in public comment earlier. This Ms. Coonsey just entered. I don't know if you wanted to speak on your letter that you brought, sent us this afternoon. Yeah, I think if you just fill out one of those pages after you're done, I think.
Sir, no, that's excellent. We always want to hear all the public's voice. It's exactly what we're here to serve. So if you, you must fill out a card. So if you just do that real quickly, we'll go and I guess we'll fill for a minute. So I would like to say, if I may, and I may. You know, to everybody's concern, pro or con, it's, it is a difficult topic. But I will say that is one of the main reasons. We started early, and it's been at least a year now, I would, yes, that we've been talking about this. And there's been different surveys and unofficial or informal surveys. And I think one of the most important things in all of this is education. There's a, there's an unfair view that, you know, a cafe is going to be a bunch of potheads smoking weed all day in a dark, cloudy room. And from my experience, that is not what you would see if you went into many cannabis clubs around different counties. Yep. So with that, we have one more public comment.
And I just want to clarify something on the technical public comment matter. Because you did submit public comment written, we typically let public commenters have one bite of the apple. So unless you were just planning on reading your letter into the record. Okay, perfect. Then that's fine.
Is that, is that legally binding like hard?
What?
I, do I have leeway? Do I have leeway to let her say something?
Well, I mean, the idea is, you know, we, we want to let presenters give public comment, but we, just like we don't let them speak twice. If they submit public comment and then speak, it's getting multiple chances to, to speak. So it's really just an opportunity to either. So we allow written public comment as an alternative. So all I'm trying to say is, if she's going to go off script, then if, if she's going to speak and then also elaborate, then we'll just pull the public comment from the record. Because she's going to cover it in, in the writing. It's one or the other is all I'm trying to say.
Mr. Splendario, didn't we, we used to read public com, written public comments out loud. The clerk would read. And in that case, it made sense where someone couldn't then speak because they're speaking twice, but we don't do that anymore. So theoretically, isn't her speaking just the first time?
Well, I would just say two things. I think number one, that was during COVID, I'm imagining.
Yes, yes.
And that, and that was, that was sort of under those emergency methods that we use. And number two, the public comment does get attached as part of the agenda packet after the meeting, and it's submitted as public comment. And under the Brown Act, you can submit, if you submit writings to the, to the council for public comment, that gets put into the agenda in the minutes as public comment. So essentially, she would have, or any speaker would have two public comments for the meeting.
So what you're asking her right now indirectly is that she can speak now and have her written comment omitted, or she can leave her written comment and reiterate it here. That's her choices.
Yeah, she could read her written comment. Yeah.
And actually, this might help because I just took a few words out to meet the five minutes for my written comment.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you so much. I was at the school board meeting, and so we just closed. So I really appreciate this special dispensation. So good evening, mayor, council members, and those here in the community. My name is Annette Coonsey. When I worked for the state, I had a key role in educating cannabis businesses about income tax laws. Most were very eager to do the right thing. In that process, we also educated ourselves about businesses completing outreach and participating in several tours. During these tours, we met genuine individuals who were dedicated businessmen. genuine individuals who were dedicated businessmen and women with the best intentions. They willingly and warmly welcomed us into their establishments. So what I'm about to say should not be a reflection of their genuine intentions or their character. However, I would urge the community and the council to cautiously consider the possible effects of a cannabis dispensary on our local Galt culture and the potential harmful effects to our youth with increased access. Galt has done a wonderful job revitalizing the downtown and trying to make Galt a hotspot on the map with its street market, refurbished downtowns, painted cows, movie nights, Old Town Festival, et cetera. We are becoming a community that attracts people for its eclectic small-town culture, and I would argue we are currently being elevated as a town. We can compete with Loomis, Auburn, and Lodi, for example, in a way that perhaps we could not in the past. And I applaud the city and its residents for the continued support of this evolution, all the while, all the while keeping the small-town caring community feel. Conversely, a quick search indicates licensed cannabis retailers are in places such as South Sacramento, Florin Road, downtown Sac, Arden, El Camino, and Stockton, where there are also rent-to-own businesses, payday loan businesses, and liquor stores. And of course, there are some university towns. Where they are not, Land Park, River Park, Lodi, Folsom, Elk Grove, Auburn, Sutter Creek, Loomis, et cetera. And this is already five years after businesses could be licensed recreationally at the state level. For some reason, these boutique communities are deciding that in the bigger picture, it's better to not have cannabis businesses, even if the possible revenue could be enticing, although not as lucrative as once expected. We need to really ask ourselves culturally, where do we want to align more closely? Further, depending on the placement on the east side or west side of Galt, some may feel there's a rift between the two sides at a time when we're successfully making strides in bringing everyone together. Additionally, trends are showing that individuals are not leaving their current dealer sources, including delivery and even illegal sources, especially now that the penalties are minimal or nonexistent. So the idea that people will move to legitimate local non-delivery sources if a business exists is just not materializing the way some thought it might. People have their existing relationships, some for decades, or may also be growing their own up to six plants. Additionally, a quick search of weed maps reveals an abounding supply and delivery market locally. And again, with low penalties, realistically, people do not refrain from these sources. The effect of cannabis on youth cannot be overstated, even though much study is still needed. Likely everyone in this room has been touched some way by this, including my family. And local legal access can further exacerbate the issue due to the observed social acceptance and perceived lack of harm. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, research has shown that perception of harm is a potential indicator of marijuana use, and that a reduction of perceived harm is commonly associated with an increase in marijuana use. A study showed that eighth-grade students from local schools located close to medical marijuana dispensaries within less than five miles were more likely to have recently used marijuana compared to those from schools located further from dispensaries. It further states adolescent exposure to marijuana products predicts up to a twofold increased risk of developing psychosis and schizophrenia in adulthood. The finding is also dose-dependent, meaning the more marijuana to which you use are exposed, the greater the odds of developing psychosis as an adult. And while an argument could be made that recreational cannabis is comparable or possibly safer than alcohol, not doing either is probably the best outcome for our youth and their academic and social development, except for some medically necessary uses. Making it even easier to obtain and sanctioning, sanctioning it as a community may not be ideal. A cannabis dispensary also creates a host of tangential costs and risks locally, especially as still a largely cash business, but they do have preventions in place, as you mentioned. Emergency medical staff could become further saturated, and a local oversight administrative structure would be needed. These resources could be more effectively applied to focusing on and preventing fentanyl and methamphetamines, a critical and timely issue. In a nutshell, I propose the juice here is not worth the squeeze. It's much easier to not make the leap in the first place than to make the leap and realize perhaps it was not what everyone hoped for, or worse, that unforeseen problems have arisen. Thank you for your time and for you and our community's careful, thoughtful deliberation on this topic as you proceed through the engagement process.
Thank you, Annette.
Thank you very much.
So is there any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, if, if council is done with their discussions and deliberations, I just wanted to bring the item back that the, sort of the, the mission at hand for this item was to receive the survey results, and also to ask council to approve the revised cannabis engagement program. And so the only addition that I'm hearing right now is finding or researching studies of cities that have taken this step and seeing what the long-term effects are on the city, both economically and possibly socially. And I think, Mayor, you, you mentioned that earlier.
Yes, sir. And I, we need some sort of, of consensus for that, correct? So if my fellow council members support that.
Can I add the comment before we say?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I think you bring a very good question. Same thing, you know, thank you for everybody giving us a comment, because it's a very controversial thing. We need to listen from the public, then we can make a right decision. You know, as a council member farmer asks, the Galt, aroundside Galt is Lodi, they does not allow it. And the left-hand side, there is Elk Grove, they don't allow. And Sacramento County also does not allow. So I like to some kind of data, what was the region? So we can compare something with what was the reason they was not allowing. There is any effect on us if we allow it. So I need to make my special decision, it, it helps with the other council member, is the whole data, find out what are the pros and cons. So if we can include some kind of data in, in, in the public, you know, meeting, so that the public can make a right decision. And I'm here, you guys represent me, to make a decision what public wants. Thank you.
Thank you, Vouse, Mayor Sandy. Mr. Lozano.
Yeah, just briefly, I just want to make a quick statement, and then talk a little bit about the, the numbers that we're looking at. I have spent the better part of probably two years talking with people about this, this item, including dispensary owners, making a visit to a dispensary, cannabis control detectives who work at the state level to regulate. And many, many of these people are, are business owners and/or residents of our community. And so this, this has been a long process. And I appreciate the opportunity that the Davis Cannabis Collective gave me to, to go and take a look. Couple of things, and, and I've met with people as, as late as last week, who both were on either side of the issue. I think as we look at the, the data, at the, of this one point and of, of data, you know, you can look at the sum total, and I, and I'm going to talk about the inverse of what Mr. Hines spoke about. But really, the undecided from both 21 and 23 are one point apart. So if you take those people out, there's 20, it was 28% really somewhat supported and somewhat opposed, and 29% total in 2023. So if you remove those, you have 36 for, which is still 14 points below, you know, half of the people. And I brought this up to Mr. Hines today in our meeting. But one of the, one of the comments in the staff survey, or staff report, is that the Galt electorate is likely to support allowing cannabis businesses within the city limits. I got some telephone calls about that. And, and I think that we need to, as Ms. Neuberger said, really look at the data, not only this, but moving forward, what, what it really means. And so I just wanted to say that it's clear that no, you know, the somewhat supported, somewhat opposed percentages being the same, there's still some education out there that either people aren't interested in, or, or that we need to do a better job of as we move forward. And so I want to just say that I think that this one data point will help make some decisions later on. But I certainly want to thank everybody that I've spoken to. And, and trust me, both, on both sides of this issue, there were many people that did not want to be publicly recognized. And so it is a sensitive issue. And like I told one citizen last week, I have my personal feelings about it. But I don't represent me. I represent the public. And, and so I think that moving forward, that we need to, at least that's what, the public needs to know, that's what I'm going to have in my mind. I think that's it. And, and I'd be supportive of moving the city manager's plan forward, so that we can come to some decisions.
So I read that as three. Proceed as stated.
Yes. And I, and I want to, I want to make sure that I, that I've captured council's direction. We will go with the plan as it, as it was revised, with the understanding, with also the addition that I will look for some research on cities that have adopted or have taken this step, and to see if there's some way to gauge the long-term effects. I will also check the surrounding cities, particularly Elk Grove and Lodi, and perhaps the county, to see how the deliberative process was managed, if, if these, if this particular topic came up. So to see why they chose to go in another direction. I'll also speak with the city managers of both Elk Grove and Lodi, and get their, get their thoughts as well. And so if I, have I captured that?
I believe so.
Your satisfaction?
I just had a question for you, Mr. Hines, though, just maybe think of it when you were talking right now. You mentioned that we were going to do like a forum, the 27th and 29th. I was just concerned, you know, that is only next week. Is there, is it plausible or possible? I know this, this thing could be fluid. Is it, and we have a long ways to go before it might actually come back to us. But would it be possible for us to schedule something like this with more notice to the public, now that this conversation is kind of becoming out in the open? I, I just worry that somebody's like, well, that's just next week. I can't make that. But I really want to, you know, I'm just thinking.
Well, that's why we held it, and we held it on two nights. The advertisement for these public forums will go out first thing in the morning. I just approved it this afternoon. I wanted to get this in front of the council first. I did not want too much grass to grow under this issue before we got it in front of the public. And that's why the timing is the way it is.
And then the other question would be, what would you, what would you advise? I mean, for Rich just mentioned, you know, there's many people, which I've heard from them as well, don't really feel comfortable speaking at the dais on, on their feelings on the subject. Obviously, people can email us and, you know, and out of the public eye and, and express to their elected officials their feelings. But is there anything else that you could think of that maybe would be something they could do to express their feelings without going to a public forum and raising their hand?
They could send their public comments to PubCom, which is the, which is the email box that we use to track public comment, written public comment for the council. And so our illustrious city clerk will track all of those comments, and, and that becomes part of my data gathering as well.
But public comment, they're not, people can't submit a public comment anonymously, right?
Yes, they can. They do not have to give their name and address.
They can do it anonymously? Okay. All right. Good to know. Thank you.
Or, and they're welcome to CC me when they do that.
Just toss in, we're talking about looking at what other communities have done and what their effect has been. People have contacted me. They go to Ileton and Davis to buy. So I would throw that in as, you know, other things to consider.
Yeah, Davis is definitely different than Galt.
Yeah. Ileton's different in a different way.
Yes, you're right. You're right. But, but I'll, I'll add those two cities to my research list. And if that works for the five of you.
That works great.
Okay, great, great. All righty, thank you.
With that, we will move on to H2, Finance Department, fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget update, agenda report by Mr. Boring.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll try to be brief and provide an overview of the changes in the staff report. This item includes the proposed budget changes for significant events that have occurred after the mid-year budget was prepared and approved by council in February. I also want to note that we also took a midterm budget that council approved in May, and that affected fiscal year '24. And the item tonight is looking at the current fiscal year '23. The first item is related to ARPA, and it's a proposal to recognize the remaining ARPA revenue. And the proposal is to recognize 1.2 million. And that's also higher than the outstanding ARPA funds that are available to appropriate, just because some of the expenditure appropriations didn't include the, the revenue counterpart also. And this was a proposal that came up after we met with our external auditors, and it was a recommendation by them. So it won't change council's ability to increase any expenditures utilizing ARPA. But we've already met the threshold for the single audit for fiscal year '23. So if we only recognize them as we approve the expenditures and the expenditure actually occurs, then that could trigger subsequent single audits in future years. I believe the current threshold is 750,000 a year. So if we're able to avoid single audits, we do have cost savings with our current contract with the auditors of over $5,000 a year. And it would also simplify reporting, because we could submit a final report to the U.S. Treasury. And please let me know if you have any questions as we go through this.
I have a quick question, and it's in the staff report. But I just want to confirm that if we recognize these funds, that doesn't tie us to spending those funds in any one location and/or any particular, to any particular entities?
No, and I, I should clarify, the city's already elected to, the Treasury provided up to $10 million of basically a standard deduction to report revenue loss. And the city was awarded roughly 6.4 million. And it was the Treasury's recommendation, if, if your allocation was less than that threshold, to take that standard amount for easier reporting. So the city is going to do that anyway, and that's how we report it as we utilize it. This would just, we would report it all at once. So it would be general fund revenue.
And we're just reporting that we have it, that we're going to spend it at some point, not that it's encumbered, or that it will?
We would just show it as revenue loss, and that's what we're taking it as. And it would be revenue, and then council would be able to allocate those funds, just like any other general fund expenditure.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, just to be clear, it's the most flexible spending category under the ARPA categories, just for general governmental services.
Mr. Boring or Mrs. Dario, we, we had a brief conversation about this. It's my understanding that one of the reasons why, so first of all, I just want to clarify, which I think has been said, but I just want to be crystal clear, that this isn't just clarif, you know, I guess categorizes this as just general fund money, and doing that doesn't interrupt the ability for us to allocate those remaining ARPA dollars in any way, shape, or form that we choose to still do so. Correct?
Correct. We're still tracking the appropriations and expenditures. So that would go on. So we would still have, you know, of the ARPA revenue we received, here's how much council has authorized and approved so far. So it's more of just a technical accounting change, where we would just record all the revenue now and, and be done with that part of it. And we would still report to council, you know, here's your available ARPA funds remaining that we've received that you haven't allocated yet, and you could approve expenditures as necessary.
And then the other thought is that I know there's a lot of chatter in DC about possible takeback of unused ARPA and all of that. I hear kind of snippets about that. So this would basically safeguard those funds for us, too. Is that not true?
That's correct. We would show them as utilized and fully expended, so there would be no clawback provision.
Okay. That's the only question I had. Thank you.
Okay. So do we have any other questions on ARPA? Okay. So the next item is the California severe winter storms. And these were the storms that we experienced around New Year's Day and through January. And the proposal is to increase expenditures across several funds by 345,000. 24,000 of that is general fund, and the remaining 321,000 is other city funds. And the distribution is based on the actual expenditures where the costs occurred. And that total includes 285,200 for tree removal. I believe the total count was over 80 trees that the city had to have removed, because they either fell over or they were threatening to fall and damage structures. There was $18,140 for additional refuse costs for debris cleanup, and 42,278 for additional staff overtime costs. And I want to note the staff, or the city has submitted a request for public assistance from FEMA for this item, and staff is working to get all the documentation and information ready for FEMA. So as FEMA reviews- So as FEMA reviews that and approves the claim, then we'll come back and provide updates in the future with increase in revenue for the reimbursements that the city will receive.
Do I understand that correctly? It still hasn't technically been submitted?
We've submitted the request for public assistance, and it's an ongoing process. So we've submitted the total damages that we have, and we're working with our FEMA representative because we have to go through their grants portal and then create different projects and provide descriptions and other information. And it, it's a lengthy process.
Just like the graveyard. Thank you.
Ours is a little easier because we're a, a small project, so we have a slightly easier time, but it's still a, a long process. And then do we have any questions on the storms? Okay, the next item is a increase to the tuition reimbursement program. The proposal is to increase general fund expenditures by 8,000. And council approved the increase in tuition reimbursement program in the fiscal year 23 budget in June 2022. And the updated policy was approved by council in July of 2022. The program increase authorized up to $4,000 per eligible employee per fiscal year while funds are available. And the program has been more popular than anticipated, so we've had to deny some employee requests for reimbursement. So the 8,000 increase would allow the city to approve the requests that have been denied. And our next item is a social security.
Can I just make one comment on that one real quick?
Sure.
I know it's on the end, you know, employee, for encourage employee development, but if you really didn't read through every part of this, people might think it's a general public item.
Sure. So to give a background or a brief overview, so there are some program requirements. It's eligible for regular full-time employees who pass their initial probationary period unless they're, some police department employees have 18-month probation, so after 12 months they're eligible. And then it has to be a program related to their job or career, and it has to be approved by their department head and HR.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the social security true-up. The proposed general fund increase is $26,702. This is semi-related to the new personnel manual that council approved in December of 2022. And it relates to the, the way the city classified temporary employees. The city had to file a certain paperwork with CalPERS, who is the state's social security administrator. And the CalPERS was kind enough to send us the documents that were originally filed in 1963 that limited the exempt hours to 600 per year, and our classification was 960 hours. So to remedy that, we changed the personnel manual to be compliant going forward. And they also made us pay the social security tax for the hours above that 600 that should have been subject to social security. So the total for all open years that they made us correct was 2019 through 2022. So that 26,000 reflects all of the years that we corrected. The next item is an officer wellness grant. It's proposed general fund revenue and expenditure increase of 28,000. The city was awarded a grant from the Officer Wellness and Mental Health Grant Program, included in the state's 2022 Budget Act. And this appropriation allows the police department to utilize the grant funds, and the city has already received the funds. We just need the expenditure increase to utilize them. The next item is additional maintenance costs. And this is a general fund proposed increase of $70,492. These are costs that were originally included in the ARPA expenditure plan that was presented to council in April and were removed from the appropriations error. And so that includes lists that have, or repairs that have already been completed on city facilities. And there's a breakdown included in the staff report, but the total is the 70,000. The next item is a fee reduction payment. Includes a general fund expenditure increase of $98,000. And this is related to, council approved the fee reduction for a development in December of 2018. And part of the agreement was the general fund had to pay the fees, the developer fees that were waived, and they were supposed to be included in a future budget cycle and paid. And staff recently realized that that had not occurred. So this increase just allows the general fund to make that outstanding payment to the developer fees. The next item is Measure R Staffing, and includes an increase in 156,000 in Measure R. That's related to, in the original 22-23 budget, we put a vacancy savings in Measure R. We try to make it as accurate as possible for budgeting. And fortunately, the police department has been better staffed than we originally anticipated, so they've been able to provide better services. And so this just increases the budget to cover staff costs for the rest of the year in the Measure R fund.
Right. And Measure R still will look good by the end of the year and moving forward, correct?
Correct. Even with this increase, we're still projecting a revenue surplus in Measure R in the current fiscal year. And future fiscal years, we, we're still, we've planned for some fund balance utilization in fiscal year 24, but we're not running into any issues of insolvency in that fund.
Excellent, because we did the same thing this year, and so I just wanted to make sure that was in the public square. Thank you.
And the final item is an update to the appropriations limit. Our external auditors recommended a change to the fiscal year 23 appropriations limit. The revised limit will be 140,605,398. And this is just a part of, the state constitution requires that we calculate this every year and then ensure that the revenues that we collect subject to the limit are less than that, of which we're well below our limit. So the change won't cause any problems for appropriations or operations for the city. And the next, it also includes a change to fiscal year 24 because that's based on fiscal year 23. And the revised appropriations limit for fiscal year 24 will be 157,735,989. And I can answer any other questions you might have.
Did it to myself. I, I just had a general fund question, you know, for the public, again, they see expenditure, 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 but our general fund is, is still in good shape moving forward, and this won't have an adverse effect on it, correct?
Correct. The general fund still has sufficient fund balance, and if we were to have expenditures above revenue in any of the fiscal years, it would be one-time items. So going forward, any recurring costs in the general fund will be covered by general fund revenues. So the general fund is still healthy, and it won't have any issues going forward either.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Is there any question, other questions by the council? Okay. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, I need to adopt a resolution authorizing proposed changes to the FYI, FY2022-23 budget into authorizing the revised fiscal year 2022-23 and 23-24 California constitutional appropriation limits. Do I have a motion? So moved by the mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my councilman Papanow may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Next is H4. Police Department Subject Officer Herman Greewall's Memorial ARPA Fund Request by Kalanowski. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last meeting, our Galt Police Officers Association President Mike Little approached you about a request for donation from the city using ARPA funds to help in the fundraising and ultimate construction of a memorial that will be located at the Galt Police Department, recognizing Officer Harmon Greewall, which will be essentially a bust of Officer Greewall mounted on a permanent stand and placed near the entrance of the police department. We have, and we transmitted to council today an itemized list, but a quote of about $110,000 in funds that are needed for this project. As you know, being a small community, the ability to raise $110,000 is going to take a minute. And so, how do I say this? When we lost Officer Ton, we did not have this opportunity to receive these type of funds to help the fundraising, which was a similar amount of funds needed. We anticipate, in a traditional timeline, without these funds, it would take us probably a solid three years to raise the necessary funds and another year to get the project done. However, it's our goal in working with the family, and perhaps Vice Mayor may have more information on this, to try to accelerate that process. As you know, these fundraising endeavors are important for the community, and I believe some fundraising needs to occur because people want to participate, and it's part of the process in healing. But at some point, it becomes debilitating in, in the approach because it's a multi-year process. So your consideration of this item, authorizing an appropriation of one-time ARPA funds for $30,000 or more for a memorial honoring Officer Greewall, is before you tonight. And I'm happy to answer any questions specific to the project. I will add that the department is leading this endeavor. We have a memorial committee because we have memorial events with Officer Ton and Officer Greewall. It's led by Valerie Heilman and President Little, or Officer Little, and other members of the organization, including actually Armando Solis, who sits on that committee, is our reserve officer. So I think we have a good cross-section of our organization and even the city in ensuring this project moves forward, this and other memorial projects honoring our officers. And the second piece of this is my acknowledgement to the GPOA for willing, their willingness to use their 501(c)(3) to lead in this endeavor to ensure that we have success. And I mentioned before, we have some items coming up. We have the Fourth of July Run, which will be on July 1st, to raise funds. And my understanding, part of those proceeds, some of those proceeds go to Ton, but, and in that endeavor, but will also go to the Greewall fundraising effort, secondarily on the second anniversary of his death. After the placement of the wreath here at our memorial, there'll be a private function with the department at Back Alley Brewing, but at 4 o'clock, we will be having a fundraiser for the community. And then lastly, in November, we have a banquet, which will be what we think is wildly successful for the community and an opportunity to raise additional funding. So I meandered a little bit in that presentation. I apologize, but I wanted to submit all the information I had. And so with that, that's my presentation to council.
Thank you, sir. Before the city council goes, is, is there any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
Not on this item.
Thank you. Is there any questions or statements from the council? Mr. Lozano?
First of all, thank you, Chief, for getting your itemized list to us and the plan moving forward. I appreciate that. I would just submit, and I'm just going to cut to the chase, I would submit that 30,000 may not be the appropriate amount. I'm, I'm thinking more. And look, and looking at the itemized list, the fabrication and installation of the bust is about 56,000, a little over 56,000. I would submit for an offer up to my colleagues that we use city funds to pay for both of those at 56,050.
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for giving me the opportunity. First of all, thank you, Chief Kalanowski, and thank you, city manager, bringing that agenda item. Also, thank you, my colleagues, they bring back this agenda item. As most of you know, the loss of our hometown hero, Harmandar Singh Garrawal, is a tragic accident while he was on his duty to help other community in need. The guard police trying to raise fund to honor him with their memorial. I think we should help department however we can. I'm a full supporter of Monument State and the police department requesting funding for. I'm a strong supporter, and everybody council is a strong supporter of the police department. I think it's a great idea and way to honor Officer Garrawal in his memory. Our officer put their lives online to our community, keeping safe. They are our hometown hero. I would ask the council, I believe I'm very much agree with the council member, Rachel Lozano, you know, is $110,000 is estimated project. And especially that's cost with the construction is too high in these days, and it's very can be hard to $110,000 to, to raise that fund. And I'm agree, I'm a supporter, $56,000 from ARPA money. That's our, you know, that's our opportunity to recognize to these officers. And I'd also like to mention something, their, their family, they also make the commitment, and they want to done this project as soon as possible. So they also make a commitment around $20,000 they can use, they can support us on that project. So I will support council member Lozano.
Thank you, gentlemen. I would just like to add that, you know, between the, the family, which is very generous, and the fundraising efforts, which I'm sure will go quite well, I propose, and it would probably be around the same amount, but I propose that the city just pick up the difference. And, you know, I'd hate to commit to $50,000 and come to find out that it takes $53,000, and we'll leave them $5,000 short. Seems a bit cold if you put it bluntly. Is there any other statements, Mike? Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, I was just thinking, I don't know if that was what you're referring to, but, so my question would be if we just commit to a dollar amount, and then we do the fundraising, let's say through, because I mean, we clearly know that the support from the community is usually very large, and I expect it to be very generous. So theoretically, I'm saying, what happens if we don't, if we designate X amount of money, and then the fundraising exceeds that amount needed? What would we do with the, what would happen with the extra funds in the reverse? Which made me think of what you just said, is I'm almost thought it's like, what if we just did the fundraise and then say, what's the shortfall? And then we can maybe just see if we can pick up the balance? I'm, I'm just throwing ideas out there.
Correct. We're thinking, we're all thinking the same thing, I think.
I don't know. Just an idea.
But, but I believe the fundraising, they are talking about two to three years, maybe three, four, the five. I like to be, you know, as soon as we have the budget, so we can complete our project. Because if we on the fundraising, it might be three years.
That, that was not my understanding, Mr. Vice Mayor. My understanding was that we would do something at the Back Alley, the police department would do something this year or relatively soon, speaking. And between that and the family that would, you know, you, they would, let's just say 60 or 70,000, and, and relatively soon, not three years, one year, and then the city could pick up the difference. Mr. Papanow, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I mean, the value of these fundraising efforts is not just money, and I don't want to buy us out of those community events because that brings people together like kind of nothing else. So I am, I'd be great with, as Mr. Lozano said, that we pick up those two sections, $56,000, the family's money, and let's let these fundraising efforts go full bore, bring the community together. And if there's a shortfall at the end of that, then let's, let's talk about that after. But I don't want to make it so that these fundraisers are, well, we don't need to do it because they're going to pick up the tab.
Fair.
And, and I support that because I do think there is, it's an important component, as Councilmember Papanow said, that, that outreach and that fellowship that occurs within the community, recognizing the loss, is important. As a point of reference, we did a dinner before COVID, so it feels like it was 100 years ago, at Littleton, where we did a fundraiser for our K-9 and Explorer program. And we raised just short of $30,000 in that dinner. So I'm confident that through what we have planned in, now through November, that we, and based on what I'm hearing that the family is committed to, because I know they're starting a 501(c)(3), you know, under the same, you know, to provide those funds, that we will get on the doorstep of where we need to be. Lastly, we have some opportunities for some bricklaying contributions, like we did with the Ton Memorial. We've designed a special, it's pretty awesome shirt that the staff has designed that we'll be selling. So I think we can get there with a suggestion. And then ultimately, if the fundraising exceeds the need, then that's just, we won't need. the need, then that's just, we won't need to pull as much as necessary. For example, if we don't need the contingency, there's one place we could save automatically. Lastly, we have a vision in the organization about doing an annual dinner. The Lodi Police Department does a chief's ball. I don't want it to be about the chief, but in that same vision, that the organization has something that's an annual event, because the recognition is, we have the Ton Memorial, and we'll have Harmandar Graywall's memorial, but there's going to be work and maintenance that needs to occur to those, and then other needs that we may need to pay back to other organizations or other efforts to support those. And so if we're doing that ongoing effort, we can pivot quicker from this fundraising to get this right, and then more of that legacy endeavor that we do, that the organization can support our folks internally or otherwise. And I know my staff has reached out and talked to folks about that 501(c)(3) process in perpetuity. So ultimately, whatever the council supports, we as an organization are grateful for. I wanted to indicate that Officer Little was here earlier, but he has an early morning commitment in another county, so he had to bail, but he tried to be here. So he just wanted folks to know that he was here.
So if I'm understanding correctly, could we authorize up to a certain amount, whatever, like say what Mr. Lozano suggested, and then see how the fundraising effort goes? If your two things go well, and the family, and then we come back and say, oh, we didn't need, you know, the 56, we need 52, then we would just adjust accordingly, or maybe there's a shortfall. I'm just saying, that's what you're suggesting, we do something like that?
Yes.
I would be fine with that, yeah.
And I think that what the last piece, I forgot to, and I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, that's perfect.
I apologize. We talked to our artist today, and based on what I'm hearing, I think I'm comfortable enough to get entered into a contract. He advised 10 months, I'm going to tell you a year. So really, kind of a year, if we get through November and we've achieved that financial obligation, we're probably a year from that for that project to be complete. There's timelines in terms of things that have to occur with that sculpture that are out of the artist's control, but we can get in line for that process, the bronzing and some other things. So even if I had the money today, I would tell you, it's a year from today before we can be complete. So I'm saying, you know, likely, we are a year from November until, with this donation, where we can be to get it going, if that makes sense for folks.
Chief, you said 110, is that the total?
Yes, that's 110. It's like 109, 505 with the contingency. I've called it 110.
So just some quick thoughts, Mr. Mayor. I mean, they raised $30,000 for the K-9. I'd be shocked if we didn't surpass that for, you know, Officer. You got $20,000 for the family, you got the Back Alley thing, which could be very prosperous. I'm looking, I'm thinking that's gonna be probably in the neighborhood of 60. If we do 50 from, that's 110. I would say you want to just keep it even at 50, and if it's short, we can come back and allocate more, but just even number. He suggested 56, I'm just suggesting an even number of 50. That's $20,000 more than they're asking for right now.
To be quite honest, either way is fine, but we're talking about six of one, half dozen of another.
Well, we have to give a dollar value, right?
Correct, correct. I'm just giving my opinion. So, do you have a problem with that, sir?
No.
Okay. So, Mr. Spandario, maybe you could help me out here, just in case. So we're going to adopt a resolution appropriation of a one-time ARPA funds, amending the $30,000 to $50,000, or more, so I could just state it as 50 grand? Because, yes. Okay, so we're gonna, I'm looking for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the appropriations of one-time ARPA funds for $50,000 for a memorial honoring Officer Graywall, Seco Exempt, Section 15301. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Lozano, seconded by Vice Mayor. The Vice Mayor may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I just mention to Chief, if you need help with any of this, I know one of my colleagues used to help a nonprofit, did these kinds of things, so you may want to, you know, feel free to ask around for help.
Yeah, I believe somebody in my staff has talked to you and others about launching that endeavor, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Next is H5, introduce and waive by reading the ordinance provided for a no parking zone on a portion of Marango Road. Agenda report by Mr. Sellings.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, about two months ago or so, came to the city's attention through a Cities and Schools Together cast meeting. There was an issue expressed by, I believe, the administration of the Liberty Ranch High School, who were having issues with particularly drop-off times, or I mean, sorry, pickup times in the afternoon. Their frontage along Marango Road currently has no restrictions relative to parking. And so myself and a couple representatives from the police department went out, met with the assistant principal out there to observe firsthand what the issue and concern was. Essentially, what's happening, because there are no parking restrictions along the frontage there, some faculty and some student drivers are using that frontage to park for the duration of the day. They park there in the morning, and that way, it's close to where their classroom is at the end of the day, so they've got a short walk to their vehicles to leave. The problem with this is, is it's taking up a third to maybe a half of the available frontage for parents to essentially come and pick up their children. And so they have made efforts internally to, you know, politely request those faculty and student drivers to use the available parking lot. However, their efforts have not been as successful as they would have liked. While we were out there, we observed that there was a portion where the roadway widened, so there's a taper in the pavement to get to that wider section where you can park along the frontage of the school. And it was, you know, the issue there was, in this tapered area, where essentially the white, what we call the fog line, or the edge stripe of the lane, cars were parked over that line. So they were in the through travel lane, which presented a safety concern, visual impairment as well, for vehicles trying to, you know, maneuver in and out. And so there was a consensus between us. PD staff were agreeable to providing enforcement for that, to do a no parking zone in that tapered area. So what we're proposing here is to paint that curb red, put signage restricting no parking at any time in that tapered area, again, because of the safety concern. There's a second piece to this effort, and that is under the purview of the police chief, to designate loading and unloading zones. So this piece here is only for the council to consider the no parking area. But the thought is, is that the police chief would designate, Public Works would do the yellow painting of the curb and signage restricting the loading, unloading zone area along the frontage for a 20-minute maximum time period, and that that would essentially enforce and prevent the faculty and student drivers from using that as an all-day parking area. So that is before you. This is a requested ordinance. No parking zones require an ordinance of the council. So it's a two-step process. This first time is to introduce and waive the reading of that ordinance, and then we would be back again on the July 18th agenda to have the council consider adopting that ordinance. And I'm available to answer any further questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. I'd be happy to support that. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Is there any comment from my fellow council members? Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. I'm willing to support this. I think this is an awesome opportunity for the city and school district to work together to solve an issue. One concern that I brought up to staff today, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Having worked around schools in this type of environment for a long time, there are some times when there are supervisors, managers, principals, assistant principals, whatever, that don't use the full scope of their authority in terms of memorandums of understanding and the student handbook to enforce rules. And sometimes, those same people then turn to the police department, say, come solve this for us in terms of citations. I just want to make sure that, and I know the chief is on this totally, but that at some points down the road, that we're asking them to do as much as they can on their end before we're writing citations to people, such as public contacts, newsletters home, however that happens. I just don't want, you know, staff members and/or students to feel as though they had no other opportunity but get a ticket, because maybe somebody didn't sit their employee down and say, you can't park there anymore, you have to park somewhere else. So that's my only concern, and I appreciate all the work the police department did with the school and certainly Public Works.
Thank you, sir. Any other council members? Mr. Papanow?
As I said at the cast meeting, I was pleased the school district came forward with a problem and a solution. And we've only had two meetings in between, and you've already got the solution in front of us. So that's really fast in government time. So thank you for the hard work.
Yeah, we want credit for that. I'm just kidding. I just wanted to piggyback on Councilmember Lozano. When the school year starts, or we come back from winter break, we do deploy a full reminder squad on the flow of traffic at different school sites that first week. And so this will be something new at the beginning of school, and we will have the timeline, because there's a second reading on this, right? So there will be a time where we actually could cite if we want, but based on how that goes, school had been in for a little bit before that happens anyways. So everybody should be well-versed on the proper way to move and what they should do. And I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, just, yeah, very quick, thank you for acting so quickly. I remember, we just talked about it. And, yeah, I think it's something long since overdue, because it's a, it's just a cluster over there during that time. So I think it's gonna be a good thing. So thank you for acting so quickly. And everybody, and I agree with what Mr. Lozano said, that we make sure to start with education, and so we don't get parents coming with pitch forks because they said they didn't know and all that. So appreciate, I would support this tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. So the way it's written, we don't need to vote. I believe there's plenty of consensus to move forward, yes?
It's an ordinance, so we just need a formal motion and a second to introduce the ordinance.
Introduce and, okay.
So we're, just a motion to introduce and waive the first reading by title only of the ordinance written there.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. There's a first and a second. Okay, no roll call vote, right?
Promise I'm not trying to trick you.
No, it's okay. It's okay. It's what you're here for, and you do a good job. Thank you. Okay, with that, we move on to H6, subject award bids for Pacific. Now we got the vote?
Roll call vote now, yeah.
Please. Misunderstood anyway, huh?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. And then we will finally move on to award bid, Pacific Polymers Incorporated, DBA American Foam Experts for the Trans Operation Maintenance Center re-roof, chip 59D, Seco Exempt, Section 15164. I read the wrong part, no. That's what, but it doesn't give a person. So is that just a general?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, I'm sorry, that's me, Mayor.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry. Yes, before you tonight, a little bit of quick history on this. As you may recall, back in February, after the severe storms that Matt touched on earlier in his item, the portion of the roof of the facility that the city owns, it's a warehouse essentially at 140 Enterprise Court, was damaged significantly. We did some emergency repairs to that. But in inspecting that roof at the time, it was 20 years old, the building is, and it was definitely in need of replacement. We had planned to replace it, you know, probably in another year or so. We were trying to wait. We've got a separate project to do some improvements for the transit facility. However, with the storm damage and seeing the condition it was in, it was definitely in need of repair as soon as possible. So staff at that time brought what we called a piggyback bid in order to expedite it. We didn't know what the, you know, the remainder of the storm season would be. We were just trying to get that roof repaired as soon as we could at the time. So we did what's called a piggyback bid, and essentially what that is, is utilizing another agency's similar bid to piggyback, if you will, off of that and get a price for our project. Based on that, we did get a bid through the membrane, the roofing membrane manufacturer got a bid for the installation, and that bid was a little over $1 million, a million, almost $47,000. And at that time, council essentially requested staff go back and do a typical conventional bid process, put together plans, specifications, estimate type, and put it out to bid. And so that's what we've done since that time. And the good news is that the low bid came in substantially lower than that amount. We're down to, I'll find my number here real quick.
42?
Yeah, 742, almost $743,000. So almost $300,000 cheaper. And so, a couple of things. Number one, that's fantastic. I mean, that's a lot of money saved, potentially $300,000. The other thing, though, about it is, there's a little bit of caution in that as you, when you see a bid that's that substantially lower, you know, there's a concern, did the bidder forget something? Did they miss something? That kind of thing. So we do some extra due diligence in that process. We did get, I think it was nine bids, as you can see the tabulation there, and they ranged from a high of a little over $1.2 million to the low of the $742,000. The prior bid, just for reference sake, would fall in at about number six, between six and seven. So not the highest, but, you know, kind of in the middle of the pack. The average of the bids, about $976,000, I think it was. So again, with that additional due diligence in contacting the vendor, just to make sure that they weren't going to request relief from their bid if they, you know, felt that they did miss something, leave something out, and they were confident in their bid, we got assurance of that. Again, checking on them, no issues, you know, no judgments or actions pending against them. They're a local company, and I believe, Mr. Griffin's here, and he might correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're a family-owned business even in the city. So we've got, and we've checked with the material supplier, who works with various contractors to install this type of roofing membrane, and they gave us no concerns with this contractor. So we are here and recommending award of the contract to Pacific Polymers, doing business as American Foam Experts for the facility. The last thing I guess I would want to touch on is the transit facility is approximately 44% of the building, and the other two tenants, well, what will be two tenants, make up the balance of 56% roughly. And so the funding for this project would be split essentially along those lines. Fund Nine paying for the 44% on the transit side, and Fund One paying for the 56%. And the reason for Fund One paying for that is that's because of the rent revenues that we receive from those other two tenants, those revenues go into Fund One. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Council? You know, I would just, because he didn't jump right on it, like maybe he usually does, I have the very same concern about taking the lowest bid. It's often a common mode of operation to not take the lowest bid. So it was really good to read in the agenda report that you checked the past work history, licenses, currents, no judgments, and, you know, researched a little bit before accepting the bid. I really appreciate that. Mr. Farmer?
I was just gonna say, I think we have a public comment on it. Just want to make sure we hear that.
Madam Clerk?
Chris Brosman?
Thank you, sir.
Not to off the gas that I get up here and I'm not picking on one of you, but I have to say the due diligence of saving that $300,000 is appreciated by one tax owner or taxpayer. I really appreciate it going to a local company instead of the first company, I think was out of Kentucky, which to me, dollars spent within our local economy come back to all of us in multi-foot. But I do really appreciate you not jumping on that piggyback. on that piggyback. And thank you for saving us $300,000.
Thank you, sir. Any other counsel from, comment from counsel? Okay, with that, linking to adopt a resolution, one, authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Pacific Polymers Incorporated American Foam Experts in the amount of $724,560 for the construction of the Transit Maintenance and Operations Center Re Roofing Chip 59D. Two, authorizing a 20% project contingency in the amount of $148,512. Three, authorizing the Public Works Director to execute a contract, changing the change orders within the approved contingency, except the improvements and issue a notice of completion upon satisfactory completion of the work. And four, authorizing the budget appropriation of $499,000 from the general fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Farmer, seconded by Vice Mayor Sandu. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, finally, we get to H7, Tennis Courts Resurfacing Project Construction Contract Award by Parks and Rec, by Mr. Sully.
I'm going to turn this over to our deputy director, Mr. John Griffin, to make the presentation. Afterwards, he and I will both be available to answer any questions you may have. So with that, I'll turn it over to John.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, councilmembers. I'm here tonight to discuss the tennis court resurfacing and pickleball project. Before I jump into the presentation, I again want to acknowledge and thank our Public Works, I'm sorry, our Park and Rec team in helping us get this project to this point. In engineering, we see the Park and Rec team as one of our clients, like we see the utilities team. And so these are always a team effort where we work together on scoping the project and getting it out to bid. So with that, I will jump into the presentation. Here's the three items we're going to cover tonight. We're going to review our base bid and the additive alternates, identify the award options, and then give our recommendation on award. So the project was advertised with the base bid, multiple additive alternates. So the base bid, as you see here, the schematic, is the court layout. And there are four pickleball courts. Those are on the west side, nearest Corrillian, one footsole court, which is on the east side, nearest the entrance to the community park, and then the three tennis courts in the middle. So the project consists generally of the court resurfacing, striping for the courts, new fencing gates, as well as new posts, nets, and goals. Again, on the far west side, I've talked about the pickleball. That's been a significant interest in the community. And then as well as that, we've also added footsole, which is a, it's a, generally it's a five-on-five soccer game, and it's a event that's played on a smaller field. And then one of the reasons that the Parks team asked us to include this in the project is that many soccer organizations use the tennis courts when the fields are unplayable or closed due to rain. And when that happens, usually Parks receives complaints from the public that those courts are being used to play, as teams playing soccer, having practice. So this also allows the soccer organizations to have a place to practice when the courts are not available, I'm sorry, when the fields are not available. So additive alternate one looked at what the costs would be, should we want to incorporate an acoustic wrap surrounding the four pickleball courts. And now let me take a step back here to the, what we're converting, we were able to squeeze in four pickleball courts into the area of one existing tennis court. So the downside is we lose a tennis court, but we gain four pickleball courts. So with that, we, one of our additive alternates was to get a price for an acoustic wrap around those pickleball courts. Pickleball, we've done some research, and what we found is it can be a little louder than your typical tennis court. So with the residents that live to the north, as well as projects that are proposed to the west and to the northwest, that was something we wanted to get a price for. And that price was, let me take a step back, the price of the base bid was a little over $195,000. The price of the first additive alternate is a little under $45,000. Additive alternate two, I don't want to say converts, but in a way does convert the three middle tennis courts into dual tennis courts slash pickleball courts. Again, the reason behind that is, as I mentioned before, the Park and Rec team has heard over and over again that the community desires a number of new pickleball courts. And in discussions with the Park and Rec team, they requested that we incorporate as many pickleball courts as possible into the bid package. And so this was the idea that Park and Rec team came up with. And so that was put in the bid packages, additive alternate number two, and that price came in at a little under $17,000. Additive alternate three is driven by additive alternate number two. We looked at, we wanted to understand what the price would be, should we want to wrap the entire northern and western fence in the acoustic wrap, should we desire to have a pickleball striped for four of the five courts. And that price came in at a little under $54,000. This table identifies the five options before city council tonight. When we opened bids, we received one bid. That bid was over our engineer's estimate in our budget, and that budget was based on our base bid. We had estimated the cost at $160,000. The low bid came in, as you can see, with contingency a little over $222,000. And the primary reason for that is the cost of the fence and the gates. That was a bulk of the difference between our estimate and the bid. So to summarize, we have the, also, so the base bid, we would, if we went award the base bid only, we would need an additional $1,740 in funding. If we went with the base bid plus additive alternate number one, which is to wrap just the westerly court, that would be a funding request of additional $111,042. Base bid two, which is to stripe the middle three courts for dual pickleball and tennis, that would be an additional $80,000 of funding needed. Additive alternate number three in base bid, which would be to, again, wrap the entire northerly fence and the westerly fence is $120,731. And I didn't really touch on that. The reason for that as an option by itself is we've seen the community play pickleball on the tennis courts, even if they're not striped. So that's an option if we wanted to just put the acoustic wrap, that we want to see what that price was for that. And then lastly, and the most expensive one, is restriping the middle three courts plus adding the acoustic wrap around the westerly and northern fence. The additional funding needed there would be $138,991. So again, those are the five options that council has to consider. Parks and Rec staff's recommendation is to meet the community's request in the most cost-effective manner possible. So staff's recommendation is that we move forward with base bid and additive alternate number two at a total cost with contingency of $240,000. And with that, we would need an additional $80,000 in funding to move forward with the project. Should council choose that option, we've identified three possible funding sources for this $80,000 additional funding request. And that could come from either Measure Q, the remaining unprogrammed ARPA funds, or from the general fund. With that, that concludes our presentation. And Mike and I are here with any, to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, just so I don't forget, is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. City councils, do you have any questions? Mayor Farmer, I mean, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Just so I understand the orientation of this, the footsole court is to the west?
It would be the eastmost court.
Okay. So then we'd be, so then the parking lot would be down, if you're looking at this drawing, the parking lot would be on the bottom of this drawing?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So then, I'm just trying to understand the acoustical barriers. So on option, on alternate two, which is the one that Parks and Rec staff is recommending, we basically have a sound barrier, that's what I'm kind of struggling to understand. So it sounds like, it looks like the sound barrier is only between the footsole, am I saying that right, footsole? I had to Google that. I'm like, what's footsole? I looked it up, and I'm watching, I'm looking on my phone. Like, how does a goalie, is he going to dive on concrete? I mean, that's a question for another time. I don't understand. Ah, right. So it looks like the barriers between the footsole court and the other. So wouldn't it, wouldn't you think the barrier would be on the outside if you're worried about the sound acoustics to the neighborhood?
For this option, the base bid and additive alternate two, there is no sound barrier. So what you see as the darker green, those are the taller fences. We have separated out the pickleball courts from the tennis courts.
Okay.
And the tennis from the footsole courts, primarily for safety reasons.
Okay. I was looking at the little symbol is similar, the little symbol that designates the acoustic barriers. All right. So on option two, then, so on option two, there is no acoustical wrap, right?
Correct.
So I drove by the ones in Lodi at Hutchins Street Park. They have pickleball there now. And I mean, you might be familiar because you live in Lodi, right, Mike? I don't, do they have acoustical wrap on that? It doesn't look like they do.
You know what? I'm not familiar enough with Hutchins Street, but I know over at Legion Park on Hutchins. Or is that where you're talking about?
That's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Legion Park, that's right.
Correct. There's no wrap. There's no acoustic wrap there. Correct.
Okay. So my other question would be, would the, the three center courts being striped for pickleball and tennis, I mean, I get that that's pretty, makes them pretty versatile because, you know, you could use them then. But as someone who played tennis for many years in high school and after, it seems like it would be a little distracting having those extra stripes in the court. Is that common for people to do that, or is this something that somebody came up with?
That is, we've seen that in other facilities. Mantica, for example, has that. But yes, councilmembers, we are correct. I played tennis myself in high school, and I would find that very confusing.
Yeah.
But we've had, you know, the community has used those courts for years. So it just, it gives them a bit more flexibility.
Well, I mean, this is a situation where we have to trust Parks and Rec staff to think they know what's best. I do like the fact that they are recommending the lower option and trying to be conservative with money. So I like to see that. So for me, I like alternate two that they're suggesting, and I think I would probably support that one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other council members? Mr. Papinow?
Yeah. So I live close enough there that I walk by it frequently, but far enough away to be outside of a conflict of interest of any kind for the record. And I do agree that the alternative two gives the most bang for the buck, if you will. And hardly ever go by there that there's not pickleball being played. And I never thought of it as loud enough to be annoying even walking on the sidewalk. So I don't, wouldn't see a reason to go to the expense of any kind of, you know, sound barrier at this point. So yeah, I'm all in favor of that alternate two as recommended.
Very good. Is there any, Mayor Sandu?
Oh, I just.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
I just recommend the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Mr. Lozano?
Yeah, just thank you to the staff for getting back to me on a couple of these questions on this earlier today. And I would agree that not only is the sound barrier more expensive, but probably doesn't allow for police officers and other public people to look through a fence and be able to see. So if we get noise complaints, I suppose at that point we could readdress it. But I like option, the additive alternate two. And I will say, I mean, I also live very close and walk by there regularly. And there is very few times where I see tennis being played, more pickleball. So I think I would be able to support this.
Thank you, sir. My only confusion in this whole thing was what the kind of the sound barriers are. But hearing Mr. Papinow that it's not that loud, not being familiar with pickleball, I was quite curious. But I think that answered that to my satisfaction. So the other question before the council here would be where the funds would come from. Measure Q, remaining ARPA or general fund. Personally, I would shy away from ARPA funds considering that we have several items, including what's going on with the chamber up in the air. So I would be okay with Measure Q or general funds, but I also would want to hear from my fellow councilmembers.
I agree with your reasoning on the ARPA. And it seems like this is what Measure Q is made for. So I would lean that direction.
Vice Mayor?
So I will support the, with that fund with Measure Q. Thank you.
Mr. Lozano?
I think a nice sign on the fencing there also when construction is going on that says your Measure Q dollars at work would be helpful. So, yeah.
Mayor Farmer, I mean, sorry, what is with me today that three, four times? Counsel been a farmer?
Well, it seems to be the consensus is to use the Measure Q money. So not going to go against the grain on that one. So it sounds good to me. But I do like the idea of the measure, the signs. We talked about that with Armando, and I think that's a perfect start for the signage.
Yep.
Let people know where their money's going.
How long, what's the timeline for this actually being completed? Because it's been, it's been a minute.
We are estimating the project will take roughly three months. And so with that...
Are you trying to be faster than the police?
It's not possible.
Excellent. That's really, that's really good to hear.
The police is also a client to another project. So the client's always right. So they're faster than us.
Excellent. Okay, so...
I have just one last comment as it relates to the timing of this. Can we make sure that we work with our user groups out there, the formal and informal ones, so that we're not doing construction at their peak times? I don't even know what the peak time for those sports are, specifically footsole. So it's probably, if we could just do what we can to work with them.
You know, we'll try, I guess. What I would say, and John can probably elaborate more, is really, you know, construction, you know, we've got to have decent weather. And I think we're looking at 60 working days, which is basically three months of time. And I do want to emphasize that, I think John probably stated it in his presentation, but that the courts would be essentially closed during the entire construction, just to kind of expedite it and, you know, not have any issues kind of thing. So, you know, if we're going to start, by the time we get contracts signed and everything, I think they're going to start probably in early August, mid-August, somewhere there.
Yes.
And so you're looking at September, October. They're going to hopefully be done before Thanksgiving. You know, again, weather permitting kind of thing. So...
I understand that.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to lay out that schedule. And I don't know how much there is that we could really do, but...
You know what we can do, though, and it just dawned on me, that we can notice, we can put signs up saying, you know, "Construction beginning X date, the..."
Yeah.
"...closed." And then that way, we're giving notice, and people aren't going to play whatever sport they're playing there and walk, and all of a sudden it's closed. And as much notice as we can, and we appreciate it.
Understood. Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember, we'll also get that information out on social media as well. And I'll interact with the, should I say, the leadership of the pickleball contingent here in Gault. I think they're about 130 strong. So we'll make sure that we communicate with them. I don't think they're going to have an issue because we're actually making things better for them.
I think the good news is we'll maybe be done with it and still in time. Soccer season's a fall sport anyways, right, for the footsole. And plus, we have late summers. I mean, there'll still be some good use of the courts, maybe at the tail end of the year, maybe. But you're right, you have to do it in good weather. So you're going to have to interfere with either spring, summer, no matter what. So with that, so I'll make a motion to approve with the use of funds from Measure Q. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just joking.
Oh, you got to read it first.
You can read this whole thing.
Nah, nah. I did that for years. You go ahead.
All right. With that, looking for a resolution to, one, authorize the city manager With that, looking for a resolution to, one, authorize the city manager to execute a contract with the First Service Production Incorporated in the amount of $211,684.55 for the construction of the tennis courts resurfacing project, CHIP 623B. Two, authorizing a 10% project contingency for the amount of $21,168.3. Authorizing a budget appropriations of $80,000 from Measure Q. Four, authorizing the Public Works Director to execute a contract change order within the approved contingency to accept the improvements and to issue a notice of completion upon satisfactory completion of the work. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Farmer, seconded by the mayor. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papinow?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Lozano?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Not too bad. Next is item I, communication.
It's probably given, but the next council meeting, July 4th, is canceled.
Okay, the next, excellent, pretty obvious, I guess. Jay, city clerk's report?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, comments by staff?
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to remind the public that we'll be holding town hall meetings on the 27th and 29th next week at the Galt PD conference room, I believe starting at 6:00. So that advertisements will start tomorrow morning, so check your social media channels. Also, for the council members, the pickleball club here in Galt meets at the community park at noon on Wednesdays. So if you're looking to get some exercise tomorrow, they'll be out there. And I think as far as staff comments, we have Chief Kalanowski.
Yes, thank you. Two items that I have tonight, I mentioned it in a previous staff report, but on Saturday, 7:00 a.m., July 1st, will be the Ton 5K run in advance of the parade. And city staff continues to advertise for participation. Proceeds obviously benefiting both officers, as we talked about before. And then the department received its two new motorcycles. We're waiting for the graphics to be installed, but they are mighty bikes. Look like they want to write a lot of tickets. I'm joking. And so, or, maybe not. And so with that, we actually have some movement in that program, so that's good. And, and I think that's all I have for tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Glad to hear the bikes are in. Glad to hear them in. Mr. Mayor, that concludes our comments. There are no, no comments from the other staff members.
Okay, I'm, thank you, sir. Comments by city council members and agenda items, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for this staff, for giving all the agenda item in detail. Thank you again. Thank you for the public comment. Thank you for the local media, they're still here. And I also, couple of events I attended. I attended the chamber luncheon. It's a well-attended, there I met some new chamber member. We discussed each other with other business members. I also attended the planning meeting for Old Town Galt Festival. There were some exciting things happening for this event. If anybody wants to help out on this event, contact Councilmember Farmer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Papinow.
Yeah, I wasn't here for the last meeting, so I don't know. It was talked about Bob Ballez stepping down from the Council on Aging, and I just wanted to recognize him for nine years, part of that as my appointee, and thank him at least now publicly for that, even though he's not here. And, and also then solicit everybody to help me find a new appointee. Thanks.
Councilman Farmer.
Yes, I too wanted to thank Mr. Ballez, if he happens to be watching, or even if he's not, for many, many years serving the seniors, I can't even begin to think of all the time he put in, really advocating on their behalf. So he will be missed, and hopefully we'll find a good replacement for him. Looking forward to the 4th July IDC stuff coming up. I know Armando's not here tonight, but should be a good event and a market that day, so it's like the double whammy. And I think with that, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Lozano.
Yeah, I was able to attend the Liberty Ranch Project Groundbreaking with members of the project team and city staff and Chamber of Commerce members. It was a good event, very well done, and there were many compliments given by the project team about the city staff and their, their level of customer service continually. So thank you, Craig, Mike, everybody in your shops that helped out with that. I just want to make another comment about the same thing, and I don't know how to proceed, so I'll ask for maybe some help from my colleagues. Again, tonight, and rightfully so, we're approving money to be spent out of Measure Q dollars. And one of the things that I mentioned before was having, finding out from the public what we really need. And, you know, this, not that I don't trust our Parks and Rec staff, but I've been through this process before, and even staff members and electeds found out there were different priorities in the public. So I would ask the city manager or my colleagues to support bringing back an item to talk about how we fund a study. We're going to be spending approximately $4 million a year, or maybe right around there in this area, and I think that kind of investment deserves some public outreach. And so I don't know if it's, I know our agendas are a little, little tight, especially in the next couple, but maybe the beginning of the fall, bringing it back, or at least having staff give us an update as to where that's at.
Yeah, I would, I would support that. I think that's, that's a good idea, because, and maybe staff can come back and suggest some ideas of how we get that input. I'm not a big fan of spending a ton of money on consulting and stuff, but if we can do it efficiently, and, yeah, but I would support that.
Thank you, sir. That makes five. Are you done, Rich?
And, and that's it. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr.
Oh, and by the way, everybody have a safe 4th of July, and make sure you water down your lawns.
I just wanted to add that when I have these public forums next week, I will also be asking, you know, here's our plan for Measure Q, what have we left out? And so I'll be bringing you that feedback, in addition to what the Councilman Lozano was asked.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. It's on the agenda already, so to speak.
Yep.
Okay. With that, thank you, staff, for the reports. They're quite concise and informative. They answered my questions for the most part as I went along, so I appreciate that. I look forward to the fundraisers and the things going on. I would like to mention that the Vice Mayor is having a Friends and Military Tank Neighborhood barbecue at the Best Western in Galt, 620 North Lincoln Way, Friday, June 30th at 6:00 p.m. Everyone's welcome. Come enjoy a good time and see some of the parade events or rides, displays up close, and maybe even climb on one or two. And with that, we'll end the meeting at 9:14. Thank you, everyone.